I didn't see a password or anything, so maybe it's public things. Maybe there is no. So anyway, so that's where it should be where you are. Of course, I think the moderator can click on whoever they're gonna see and listen to.
Sure.
But you should be able to watch. You know, then you go right ahead. You got any thoughts on dinner? I'm gonna get it. That's what that's the, I'm not gonna be participating. I need you to think. Get some fish out or what?
He's too late for fish. Let's go see what else.
It's 4:30.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, that's true.
But pizza. So anyway. So. So the other day, Trump wasn't gonna do any more of these, and now all of a sudden, here he is with this photo op. All the policy CEOs to come and say, thanks, Donald. We're making, we're making masks. Thanks, Donald. See how great you are.
Instead of the summer, it's funny, it's not changed.
Yeah. Somebody a long time ago, like January, December 31st, they sent the, what do they call it? The DNA sequence to the World Health Organization. December 31st, January, February, March, April, four months ago. Now, they didn't come out and brag about it in the beginning. But that was four months ago, Donald. Where have you been? Four months and 50,000 people. 50,000 Americans. Where you been, darling? Oh, half a dozen times, little pep rallies. Now these are your daily pep rallies. Anyway. How hungry are you when you wanna eat?
You know, you can make it anytime you want to. We could start at five. I just wanted to use this time to.
Yeah, do whatever.
No, no, I wanted to show you the list.
Newly, on Metacran, today was, he was explaining the stroke thing. You know, research.
Oh, a Metacran.
They see.
Oh, we should send that to Bill, because Bill, Liam.
Yeah, I saw him. I saw that post. I imagine he's following the yellow shirt, I'll share.
Yeah. So obviously, yeast. You know, if it's there, we'll get it. Flour. You're getting whole wheat flour, so we need white flour.
Yeah, if it's there, I should go ahead and grab a package.
Okay, turkey bacon's good. I'd like to get the larger containers of apple sauce. And organic cranberry juice. So this is, these two are up in front, so I'll just have the apple sauce is back there in that section, you know, not too far from the buche, so apple sauce is fruit and tomatoes. Tomatoes, the juices are back there. Because we need to get cheese in your wheat blends or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. So turkey thighs and ground turkey would be the best. And then over at the, well, it's actually Bino and Coke. That's gonna be the list to read section. Okay. Apples and clematis and greens. So these are the other things. Eco slum detergent is back in that corner. I'll just pick up another cat litter and TP. Then the flower, I guess flower would be.
So let's see, so we need to go early. What time do they open this at eight? I'll look at the website and see. Regular guests.
What is it?
Hour 64 per guest. So we'll fill out by 7:00 AM to 6:30. Some states are, will require face masks. Yep. Yeah, I mean, we're, we will consider the virus a death sentence. Driving all the, now he goes into every detail. What it does is it sounds like it uses up your inside the epithelium of this arteries is the ACE2. He described how the ACE2 work this way and that way, and how the virus absorbs that. And so there's a place where the ACE2 is converted into something else to do something. And the and it relates to coagulation. Starts in the youngs, but it
Starts in the what?
The virus starts in the young, in the youngs, in the lungs.
Okay, okay.
And then so the virus starts in the lungs, and then at a certain point, it starts, moves into the circuitous. And then when it's in the circulatory system, well, in the lungs too, but the circulatory system, it does it ties up the ACE2. So the ACE2 isn't available to allow the body to adjust to. And that's why these massive clots happen. So they're looking for therapies to address that. But that's why, you know, they have people. That's why, you know, you've seen, you've read the stories, supported them, meet about young people, they're you know, they're seem otherwise healthy, and all of a sudden, they're having these massive strokes. Which, and he talks about on the scan, removing the stroke as he sees strokes form around the stroke. What is it? Just one place. It's throughout the circulatory system, so. So that's of course, Donald is, a long time ago, somebody decided not to do it this way. Yeah, Donald, and you were one of them. You play golf. Well, let's see, people. A few people have connecting. I don't see Carol. I see John. Judy is connecting. Anyway, so here in 15 minutes.
Dialing in from Michael Biscone.
What's that?
Host is not in the meeting yet.
Need this.
Coming up is Darren's iPad.
That's me.
No, that's you. And then this is gonna be everybody else.
Who's here?
Bill, is it there?
Who's Bill?
I don't know. Bill. Wernah. And then Carrie, Dunne.
Who?
Carrie Dunne.
Oh, those are the members of the board.
Right, those are the people that you're having this meeting with, correct? I put them all in there. Did you, so they'll all be. I tried to put your name in, but it wouldn't take your name. But they'll know your face. As long as you can see, they can see you.
Well, I really wanna get the attorney up there. I don't, why did you choose these people to meet?
They're all at the meeting. It's, I chose. Don't you want to talk to all of them?
Who, who, who are these people supposed to be?
They're all joined in at this meeting.
Yeah, but there's gonna be a ton of public people. I don't want the public people. I just want the board. Do we get to choose who we see?
Who do you choose? Not videos, share content, participants, oops, participants. Okay, here, we can pick them here and guess. I don't need, it might all be there.
Can you hear? Can you speak? So we know you can.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, just double checking. John, can you check yours? He's almost there. I lost him.
There's a big stewards meeting after this, and there's gonna be 20, 30 people.
Hello.
Hi, so we can hear you. I just wanna test you, make sure we could hear you.
Oh, very good.
Excellent.
My name is Caruso.
Yes, come if they can hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Uh, can you hear Michael Biscone? I'm the attorney for the fair.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Yep, you'll see, I think you're first on the agenda. The chairperson will come on, and she'll read an introduction and all that for you soon. Um, and people are coming out for two different things. You'll see, some people, some people, you know, the different blocks. If you hit participants, you can see how many people are there. But they can hear you for sure.
Participants are up there. And that's what I have. All these people on there, because I put participants.
All right, there's Pat Kennedy. Pat, you can hear me?
Yes, sir, I can.
She's the treasurer from the Altamont Fair, folks. Now, Pat, did we, we remitted our fee already? Did, did we not for these applications?
Uh, yes, I believe we did.
Hello?
Hey, Deb.
Hi, Deb.
I don't see you right here. Oh, there you are.
I didn't think it was. Like, you answered the questions, and it kind of spelled it, put it to bed.
Barb, can you hear everybody?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just double checking.
I'm sorry, I had trouble getting in. Anyway, I'm here.
We're early.
With three inches of papers.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Is Allison in yet?
Not quite, not yet. She'll be here. You'll see the name, Mr. Biscone. Deb Hext is your chairperson for the planning board, who's, she's on the screen. I don't know if you could see her or not, but she'll, and Allison is just connected.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I got her.
Okay.
Allison just got on.
Yep.
Everyone. Hi.
Hi.
See Allison.
Hey, Av.
I don't wanna hit participants.
Well, I did. I mean, maybe.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
Yeah, hey, Bill.
Oh. Click on it.
Now you're there.
So you have, that's the personal chat. But she's not, not there?
No. Don't worry about it. Maybe it comes up when she talks or something.
Yeah, you will, you will see her, which, if she's speaking, you'll hear whoever's speaking, you'll see their picture. That's usually, yeah.
I think, can you guys hear me talking now?
Yes.
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 Yeah, we could hear you talking without a microphone.
You don't need me anymore, right? Okay.
We love you anyway. Oh, dear. Thank everybody who's put in a lot of time on this. I, you guys are troopers.
All right, that's enough. Paper we need.
If anybody hears any moaning and groaning, my dog is snoring right under my feet, under the table.
I just gave my dog a bone and told him to go away. That'll last about 10 minutes.
Yeah, I might have to do that at some point.
Dear.
Did Altamont get snow?
No, but they did up at Thatcher Park. I was there this morning, and in, in different spots, some part of
Did, okay.
Yep, oh, yes, definitely.
Debbie?
Who said that?
Lance.
Hi, Lance. I, I don't see you. I see your name, but I don't see you. Is your video on?
Do you want me on, do you want me on camera?
Of course.
Okay.
You really want me to answer that?
All right, I'm here.
Yeah, okay. Oh, boy.
We see your top of your head. Okay, now you're straight.
Give everybody a few more minutes. It's about three of, so. Just remember, everybody, if you're not speaking, to mute your microphone, especially, I know there's going to be a lot of paper ruffling tonight. So if you're not speaking, just make sure, please mute your mic so that the transmission's not interrupted. Okay, I have just about 7 o'clock, so I guess we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deb Hacks. I'm the planning board chair. Welcome to the Village of Altamont's remote planning board meeting. It's Monday, April 27th at 7:00 PM. For the record, this meeting is being recorded, both audio and video. At this time, if each planning board member would introduce themselves, starting probably by first name in alphabetical order. So Bob, Barb, would you go first, please? Barb, are you still muted?
I'm Barb Melfelder. Connie Roche.
Dan Hen, alternate.
Ron Hyuki.
Steve Caruso.
Okay, I think we have everyone. We also have representing, hello?
Yeah.
Somebody trying to say something?
No.
Okay, we also have representing the village, Allison Phillips, who's our village council. Lance Moore is our building inspector. Ginger Hannah is our planning board secretary, and we also have Dean Whalen, who's a liaison to the village board. Before I get into the agenda or anything, I would just like to make a few comments, if you give me a few minutes of your time. My guess is, most people are here for the stewards review. And there will be an opportunity for public comment for both the lot line adjustment and stewards sub. And if we can ask everyone to try their best to limit your comments to three minutes at the most. This will give everyone an opportunity to speak. If we're respectful for each other, we'll get through this. We're gonna try to time you, and as you get close to your two to three minutes, we will tell you to wrap up your comments. If, if your camera's on and you have something to say, if you just raise your hand, I hopefully notice you. If I don't, the rest of the board, can you at least let me know that, let's just say, Kristin has something to say? If, if you're on by phone only, I will call you by your phone number. If you're not displaying your phone number or your name, I'm not, I'm not sure how I can help you. But maybe you could just speak up at some point. Let's see, if you have any questions, the village board has contracted with Barton and Lujudis. They're our village engineers. They've reviewed the site plan. They reviewed the SWEP. There has been comments out there from Barton and Lujudis, and also students' response at our, on our village website since Friday. There were also a few questions that have been coming in over the past couple of weeks from our, our planning board folks. And the questions are out there on the village website as well, and they've been addressed by stewards. So hopefully, we'll get through everything tonight. I am not looking to make a judgment whatsoever tonight. As a matter of fact, and maybe this'll help things, I would probably consider, at the end of this meeting, depending on how far we go, extending public comment. extending public comment and keeping the public hearing open for at least another 10 days after this. That way, if any new information is given that people want to review, if any new questions are asked of stewards, stewards will have time to review, and that way we'll give everyone fair share and a reason to be able to continue on and have their voices. I guess if that's it. Allison, if you could read the public notice for the the lot line adjustment.
Yes. Village of Altamont Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning board of the Village of Altamont, New York, will hold a public hearing on April 27th at 7:00 PM on the application of Albany Schenectady Green County Agricultural and Historical Society, Inc. for a lot line adjustment waiver on a property at 243 247 Bradley Road, Altamont. Tax map number 37.00-3-2 and 8.07-1-14. The property is owned Planned Unit Development, or PUD. Meeting will be held remotely as part of the Village of Altamont's COVID-19 Response Plan and can be accessed by the public using the following internet link or dial-in phone number. Topic: Planning Board Public Hearing on Albany Schenectady Green County Agricultural and Historical Societies, Inc. Application for a Lot Line Adjustment Waiver. Time: April 27th, 2020 at 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Internet link: HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J backslash 405274801. Meeting ID: 405274801. Or join by phone at 1646 558856. A copy of the planning board agenda and related materials will be available on the village website at www.altemontvillage.org. Hard copies may also be obtained by contacting the planning board secretary. Deborah Hext, Planning Board Chairperson, Village of Altamont.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open the public discussion on on that topic?
So move.
Who said that?
Connie.
Connie, thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Who was that?
Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Ginger roll call, please.
Board Member Hyuki.
Roof.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor.
Board Member Roe.
In favor.
Board Member Mollfelder.
In favor.
Old member. I'm sorry, Chairperson Hext.
In favor. Okay, with that being said, for the applicant, do you have anything that you would like to discuss with us?
Well, first of all, I'm being shown as Darlene's iPad. So Michael Biscone, I guess, will be shown on your screen as his wife's iPad. This is a kind of an historic application. I was in the attorney for the fair since 1979. And at one time, we had requested the village to change the zoning out there to PUD because we had some concerns that the fair was going to be taken over or attempted to be taken over and bought out by land developers. And we thought that this would be used as a defensive shield. As you know, we've sold some land to a housing development across Brandle Road from our main entrance, and that's there, and that's been improved and exists as we speak now. We have two one-acre lots that we'd like to split into two with the rear half acre to be joined in with our parking lot as additional overflow parking lot. And the front half acre, and this would be for 243 and then 247 Brandle Road, to be listed for sale. One has a one-family house and the other one is vacant land. We would incorporate the rear areas into our parking lot, using them as grassed areas, which our main parking lot is. And as you can see from the map in front of you, the access or the area traveled by vehicle is crushed stone. And I'm sure you're all familiar with the fair. It's not deep crushed stone, but it's a light coating of crushed stone to give you some traction. That would be just more of an overflow parking lot. It would be incorporated into our master deed. And then the two front areas, as we said, one's a one-family existing dwelling, and the other one will be sold as potentially a one-family residence dwelling subject to your your leadership and your decision tonight, or as the chairperson said, potentially in 10 days. So that's what we're asking for. We have two lot line amendment waivers before you, one for each lot, and we're open to any questions from the board or the public.
Does the public have any questions at this time?
I do.
Okay, who? Please state your name and where you're calling from.
Nancy O'Brien, 244 Brandle Road.
Okay, Nancy, thank you. What's your question?
If I'm looking at the house that the Altamont Fair owns, the red brick house, is the lot that you're going to involve on the left or is it only on the right? The wooded lot that goes along the Altamont Fair entrance.
Pat, answer that, please.
The the lot is between is the the wooded lot, not the one along the road. It's the one between the two houses.
Okay, I was misinformed. I was told by someone that the village told me to call, and he told me and assured me that it didn't involve the lot to the left. It was a wooded lot to the right of the house that you own, that Altamont Fair owns. And it would be adjacent to the the entrance that's already there.
No.
Is your plan to take the entire lot or just half of it?
We're we're gonna take.
The lot between the two houses.
We're splitting that in two. Right. Yeah, we know what you're asking. We're we're gonna split that lot in two, and the half acre to the rear or what would be to the west would be joined to the parking lot. And the half acre to the east, which is it fronts on and is contiguous with Brandle Road, would be the lot to be sold.
Okay, that lot's in the town of Gilderlin, correct?
No, no. Portion of it is in Gilderlin, but for jurisdictional purposes, Gilderlin has been advised of this and has deferred to the village because the majority of the one acre, and by that I mean fully three quarters of the acre, is within the village solely. And as a result of that, Gilderlin's interest in it has been waived.
Do you have something? I have nothing on that. This is Deb Hacks again. I'm sorry. I have nothing.
Allison notified them of that.
She did, but I see nothing from Gilderlin waiving the the rights to the decision to the Village of Altamont.
I didn't either when I went to the village.
This is. So this is Allison. We provided notice of the application that had been made to the Village of Gilderlin, to the town of Gilderlin, and also the notice of this public hearing. The response that we got was from the Gilderlin town assessor. It didn't speak directly to whether or not any approvals were required from the town of Gilderlin. It simply, I think, was referring for, you know, tax purposes, you know, basically just, you know, we'll 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 make the correction to the tax parcel number and the tax time. So, you know, we would we would encourage the applicant to confirm with the town of Gilderlin whether any approval is needed from Gilderlin. But for our purposes, since we do have one of the lots and then a majority of the second lot in the Village of Altamont, we have jurisdiction to review the request for lot line adjustment as it affects the Village of Altamont. And, you know, that's what we will be approving tonight. The applicant can confirm with the town of Gilderlin what if additional review or approvals are needed for their town. But for our purposes, we will be voting on or considering the request to that's under our subdivision regulations to waive the finer subdivision review process for this simple lot line adjustment in the village.
And what I'll do, Allison, is I'll get the confirmation to indicate that you're the lead agency. Because you normally do that when some form of an application affects two municipalities. One will defer to the other as the lead agency, and clearly by acreage, you are the lead agency on this applica- on both applications.
And and I I I leave it up to Gilderlin. You know, it certainly wouldn't be unreasonable for them to defer to the village if the majority of the property is located in the village. And, you know, if you get that confirmation, certainly happy. So we have it for the record. Also, just to note for everyone, you know, as far as, you know, the reason why we're not doing a seeker review for this is simple lot line adjustments are considered a type two act, and that's exempt from review under seeker. So again, another another this is a more simplified process.
Thank you, Allison. Any other questions from the public?
I just want to confirm that the front half of that property will not be part of the Altamont Fair.
Is this Nancy again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct, Nancy.
I live across the street, and I know that the lot's less than an acre.
Right. We're 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 not gonna be. It's not gonna be part of the fair. So I guess the thrust of your question will will be more cumbersome or less cumbersome on your enjoyment of your property, and the answer is less cumbersome. We weren't. We're not gonna extend the fair out to Brandle Road, and I think that's the thrust of your question.
Yes, I don't want my property to be diminished because of the Altamont Fair.
Right, neither do we here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Nancy.
Deb?
Yes.
I have a question on my screen. No matter who's talking, I keep getting this a green circle with the picture of a white phone.
That that is because the person isn't joined via video, only a phone. So if they don't have a camera on their laptop or their or their phone or their tablet, you will see only a little like old-fashioned phone receiver.
Okay, even though they're not talking?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions for the from the board regarding the applications for the lot line adjustment waiver? I don't see any hands or I don't hear anybody. All right, I think what we'll do then is because we have two lot line adjustment waivers, I think we will vote on each one individually. So could I have a motion to approve the waiver for the lot line adjustment for tax map number 37.00.3-2?
So moved, Deb.
Thank you. John?
Deb, 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 point of order.
Deb? Who's that?
This is Dean.
Hi, Dean.
Point of order. You need to close the public hearing, correct?
Yes, jury.
You need to close the public hearing.
You're right.
Forward with a vote, right?
Thank you. Thank you. It takes a village. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing for the Altamont Fair's lot line waiver adjustment?
Make the motion. Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
I'll second it.
John? Okay, Ginger roll call, please.
Okay, Board Member Hyuki.
Roof.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor.
Board Member Roe.
In favor.
Board Member Mollfelder.
In favor.
Chairperson Hext.
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thank you.
I didn't hear the first vote. Was the first vote opposed or in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try me again here. Could I have a motion to approve the lot line amendment waiver for tax map number 37.00.3-2?
Make that motion. Barb.
Thank you.
I'll second it. It's Connie.
You, Connie? Roll call, please, Ginger.
Board Member Hyuki.
In favor.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor.
Board Member Roe.
In favor.
Board Member Mollfelder.
In favor.
Chairperson Hext.
In favor.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion then to approve the lot line waiver amendment for the Altamont Fair for tax map number 48.07.1-14?
Make the motion. Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Second it. John?
John? Roll call, please.
Right. So Board Member Hyuki.
In favor.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor.
Board Member Roe.
In favor.
Board Member Mollfelder.
In favor.
Chairperson Hext.
In favor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other thing, since it is zone PUD. If you ever do desire to think about selling those lots as residences, you may want to go before the board to have that rezoned correctly to R10 or R20, whatever it was. I'm not sure. Just a just a thought.
For single-family homes, what would it need to be rezoned, Allison, from PUD to what?
R10 or R20. It depends on what's the size of the lots are.
Okay, here they would be. They're half acre. They're both half acre. Right, both half acre. So whatever one fits into one of the other categories?
Right, right.
Okay, and that that if I remember that procedure, that goes first through you, then a reference to the zoning board, and then back. Am I correct?
I think for the rezoning, it would be it would be the the village board would make a decision on the rezoning, and it would involve a referral to the planning board, you know, for an advisory opinion or a recommendation on the request for zone change.
Okay.
I'll note, you know, the the parcels are zoned
That is.
right now, and and there is an existing residence on the one house, which, you know, had been owned by a third party up until, I think, 2013.
Right.
So the, you know, the zoning designation, I I think actually was there before the the PUD zoning designation, but in order to construct a new single-family home on the other lot, you would have to have a zone change. And so for planning purposes, I think it makes sense to look into changing the zoning on those those two front parcels if they are going to be used for residential use.
Yeah, the one the one would be grandfather. The one predates the the zone change, so its use has been contiguous and continuous. I mean, since since before we bought it. So I agree with you. I don't believe that needs to be rezoned, but we certainly would bring them both to the attention of the village board since we have to do the other one anyway.
I think that would just be good for planning, for, you know, good planning.
Uh, no.
Pardon? Did someone say something?
This is Dean. This is Dean. There is two avenues. One, the planning board could recommend consideration of changing the zoning on those two parcels. Or, as previously mentioned by Allison, you could come before the village board and request the change for those two parcels. Even the one parcel with the house on it, though, is currently zoned as PUD, even though it has a house on it from way back when.
Right. Which do you prefer? Which would you prefer I do? Does that your the way you're phrasing it's a matter?
It really doesn't matter to us. Often, we do have. We do have the applicant come. We often have the applicant come right to the village board, and as Allison mentioned, that will take the process to where we would, as the village board, refer to planning and zoning.
Okay, we will.
And Michael, we can. I can follow up
Either way.
view the, you know, kind of process in our law for a property owner initiated zone change. And, you know, I can just key you into the relevant provisions, and, you know, you can go with your client if that's something you guys want to do.
I think we're gonna have to. Yes, we would be, and I will. I will follow up with Gilderlin and and get that for completion of your file as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Allison. Thank you.
All right. I guess that takes care of us.
You can stay up.
Yeah, no, no. I'm gonna go watch Jeopardy instead of play it. Thank you for your. Thank you for your courtesies.
Thank you. Okay, so. Okay. So, Allison, you're up. Did you want to read the legal notice for Stewart's? Please.
Legal notice, Village of Altamont Planning Board. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning board of the Village of Altamont, New York, will hold a public hearing on April 27th at 7:00 PM on the application of Stewart's Shop Corp, Stewart's, for special use permit and site plan approval submitted to the planning board in conjunction with its proposed Stewart Shop redevelopment project located at 1001 Altamont Boulevard backslash 109 Helderberg Avenue, tax map number 48.06 dash 2 dash 3 and 48.06 dash 2 dash 2. The property is Zoned Central Business District, CBD. The project plan includes an internal lot line adjustment to combine two lots and demolition of an existing structure. The meeting will be held remotely as part of the Village of Altamont's COVID-19 response plan and can be accessed by the public using the following internet link or dial-in phone number. Topic: Planning Board Public Hearing on Stewart's Application for Special Use Permit and Site Plan. Time: April 27th, 2020 at 7:00 PM Eastern Time. Internet link: HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J backslash 405274801. Meeting ID: 405274801. Or join by phone at, sorry, 16465588656. A copy of Planning Board Agenda and related materials will be available on the village website at www.altemontvillage.org. Hard copies may also be obtained by contacting the Planning Board Secretary. Deborah Hext, Planning Board Chairperson, Village of Altamont.
Thank you, Allison. Okay. Could I, at this time, have a motion to open the public hearing for the Stewart's special use permit, please?
So moved.
I second. Barb?
Thank you, Barb. Roll call, please, Ginger.
Board member Hukie?
Ginger, it sounds like you're playing ping pong. I can't really hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
All right. Can you, can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So, board member Hukie?
You've gone again.
And it is coming on.
I didn't hear the-
Could everyone else please mute their microphones? That might be the problem.
And if you're on the phone, you can mute your phone by hitting star six. So if you're calling in only by phone, please mute your phone by hitting star and six.
Okay. We're clear, I think, now, Ginger. Go, try again, please. Thank you.
Okay, good. Board member Hukie? I didn't hear anything. I'm sorry.
John, are you on mute?
Yes, I was. In favor.
Okay. Board member Caruso?
In favor.
Board member Rue?
In favor.
Board member Molfelder?
In favor.
Chairperson Hex?
In favor.
Thank you.
At this time, Chuck, if you want to give overview of your site plan, I, I know we've all had a chance to review this. I want to give the public ample time to, to speak. So, you know, let's, I don't want to say make it short and sweet, but, you know, give us your best laid plans in the most condensed way.
Yeah, I just, can you, I just want to make sure you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you, and we can see right now, so.
Okay. So you can see my screen. We're proposing a building that has a porch on the front or northeast elevation. That porch will wrap around to the northwest elevation. The delivery area is proposed along the southeast. And the rear of the building that faces 111 Helderberg Ave is proposed with the mechanical units on the back. Important elements include that this is where Stewart's does not propose any lights. This was a question that was raised in the Barton and La Judas letter, in addition to some of the planning board letters, or planning board questions. We do propose one single externally illuminated sign. This sign does not have LED components. It has a mechanical scroll. The scroll will change to a certain price and then remain relatively stagnant. It will not, you know, it's not an electronic message board and will not, you know, constantly change. At the gasoline, at the gasoline canopy elevation, you see that we propose two pumps. Each pump will have dual fueling capacity. And on top of the roof, a Mansard building. The biggest issue, I think, from a site plan perspective, is, is this. This is the site plan that was proposed. This shows the dumpster location on the property line with 111 Helderberg Ave. And then here, we show moving the dumpster to a position outside the rear of the property. The zoning code for the village indicates that dumpsters should be located in the rear of the property. That's not something that needs ZBA action, but instead of waiver from the planning board. So we had, in March, sent a letter indicating or requesting consideration for moving the dumpster, as that was one of the anticipated elements of the zoning board's review. We did achieve all of the variances from the zoning board for front setback, setback to 111, and then the lot size. So that's the, I think, the biggest site plan issue that has to be addressed tonight. The location of the dumpster and its potential impact, as when you move the dumpster, you're also able to move the light that's associated with it. From there, we just have plans identifying the utilities, which are water and sewer connections, where the electric's coming from, the proposed grading plan, the stormwater plan, which essentially shows an array system in the southeast corner or northeast corner of the property. And then, the roof drains directly to discharge directly to the creek. After addressing the dumpster location, the next element to consider for the board is plantings along the property line here. So Stewart's is willing to take the foundation from 107, 109 Helderberg and incorporate it as a retaining wall, which is why retaining wall detail is not provided. However, to do so, when you get to plantings and you put the fence on top of the retaining wall, there was some concern raised in the Barton and La Judas letter that said the species selected, which were Austrian pine, might not be the best. If the board desires, we are willing to switch to an Arbivitee. That does not have a canopy, but would provide the vertical screening, and we can space them out differently. This plan was developed by a registered landscape architect. That was a condition of the zoning board of appeals approval. The next plans are the photometric plan, which speaks to just the, the lighting configuration, again, altered if the dumpster enclosure moves, and then some miscellaneous details. So, obviously, at this point, it's up to the board, whether the board asks questions, or you wait for the public to speak, and then answer questions at any time, either uncomfortable with either.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Well, I, I think at this point, some of our questions you've addressed, and we've published those on the village's website, I, I would just like to ask one question here that came in from a resident, and it, it has to do with the site plan, which is why I'm asking it now, is that, is there a way that the electrical units, the electrical panel can be moved to the rear of the building? I believe, according to this Rick Grant's letter, access would still be available for maintenance.
If I-
Would be moved over to the side.
Hang on a second, John. Go ahead, Chuck.
I just want to make sure I understand the question. The, does that mean the, this exterior electric cabinet? Or did you mean the mechanical units along this, this elevation?
It states, electrical contractor, Rick Grant's letter states how the units can be moved to the creek side of the building, and the electrical panel can be moved to the rear of the building. Access is still available for maintenance. The letter is included below, but I, blah, 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 never mind. You don't need that.
Yes. So we reviewed this on the, the southwest and southeast elevations. To move the, it's, the potential exists for moving one of the compressor units. I think it's the cooler compressor, which would basically be this one here, can move here if this, if this ice chest is eliminated. Unfortunately, with the panelized systems for the cooler and the freezer, which are... So, so you'll see here, this is one of the compressors, and here is one of the HVAC units, and here's one of the HVAC units. The HVAC units are all proposed to be outside the panelized systems. So what we're asking is if we could, and we're asking this of the ice supplier and the contractor, if we move, we eliminate this ice chest, we think we can move this compressor. So no, not all of the mechanicals can be moved to the creek side, but the potential exists for, you know, one or some of them being moved.
So that, that's a question that you have out there to be answered yet?
Yep. And then we'll provide that in written correspondence with the subsequent submission.
Okay. All right. Thank you. John, you were going to say something?
I, I just mentioned when you said moving the electrical units, and I said, added, and take the compressors in the back and move them on the side for the electrical units. I, I do have a question once you get to it, or a few questions.
Okay. We, we can give some time for the board's questions. But I, I really, at this point, you know, I want to make sure that we allot enough time for the public, even given the fact that we may and probably will extend the public hearing 10 days or more. If the board can just ask a few simple questions at this point, and, you know, let's, let's give some time to the public as well. So go ahead, John.
Chuck, just to confirm, there will be two handicap parking spots up front?
Correct. Because we exceed 25, we have to go to a second handicap parking space. And my letter indicate-
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood the, the letter. And the other one was a wall. Why did you say you could not provide a, a cross-section of a wall in back?
Because we're not using a stock vendor-supplied wall. We're gonna take the foundation from the house and repurpose the stone into the retaining wall.
Okay.
Thanks, John. Any other board member? I, I see Chuck's plan, so I really can't see, can't see-
I can stop sharing. Want me to stop sharing?
Yeah, stop sharing for the moment if you need to bring it back up. Okay. Connie, Barb, anybody? Steve? Dan, you, as our registered architect, if you, you know, you've given a lot of insight to us. I know you're the alternate. You can't vote, but if you have any insight as far as Austrian pines versus the Arbivites, certainly chime in.
Well, I understand Chuck has mentioned that they'll resubmit landscape plan, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so the, it'll be updated, and we'll take a look at it from there?
Yeah, it's just that, the code says pines, and that's why we submitted the Austrian pine. But if you want to deal with something that doesn't have the canopy, and you're willing to switch to the Arbivitee, we're willing to do it. We just need the direction from you.
Yeah, my, my original comment wasn't against Austrian pines. It's just that they're difficult sometimes to transplant. And you don't, usually don't have a lot of success. So it's just what, the comment was just to look at options. That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Connie? You're on muted, so you, you're, you're up.
Okay. I mean, I do, I do have some questions, but I wasn't sure if this was the time for the, the public to speak.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's time for the public and us. So if we can't answer your questions now, you know, we're certainly get them answered for you.
Okay. Um, actually, Chuck brought up repurposing the foundation to a retaining wall. And I, I know I brought it up in the past and some others about using, repurposing other stuff from the building that's going to be taken down. And I wondered about, I saw something at a Stewart's in Brunswick, where they have taken, they worked with the local historian and were able to put a, a really nice sign that described the, the house that was demolished, and really bring a lot of the history of the, the village into a really big display, and used some pieces from the, the old house into, incorporated into the presentation in the store. So I was wondering if something like that could be generated for the store.
So the, this store is not eligible for the historic register. The project in Brunswick, the house that was raised was eligible for the register. So as part of our mitigation with SHIPO, we did the building features that we, you saw. Those building features were not actually part of the house. They were architectural components, fiberglass-type pieces that were replicated to incorporate into the, the design. The only actual piece that came from the house was the weather vane. The house at 107, 109 is not eligible. And it's frankly not, I mean, it's, it's a nice house, and I'm not gonna say it's not a lovely two-family non-compliant residence, but it's not a historical house. So it's our feeling that because of the way we construct buildings, the elements are not useful to us. But to, to repurpose anything, the only thing salvageable would be the stone. We are willing to allow architectural salvage. If like a historic alby or someone of that nature wants to come in and take banisters, doorknobs, et cetera.
Um, I guess the historical nature of the house itself, but of the village, if we're building new construction in the central business district of Altamont, I thought the idea was to use, use the historical properties nearby as a model. So pieces like the, I don't know if gingerbread is the right word, but some of the, the, the additional features on the, that I saw on the dormers and the windows and the poles, just to, to soften the look a little. So it wasn't so, uh, I'm not sure what the word is.
Industrial or?
So, so, so plain. I, that's not quite the right word. But I thought some, some features like that might soften the look.
Chuck, can we take that into consideration going forward and perhaps discuss it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, yeah, I mean, I, we're just looking at the, where the columns meet the, the porch roof. Maybe we do some, some type of corbeau or some, you know, I, I know Dean's on the, the line, and he knows, I'm not an architect. I've never, you know, claimed to be one. But we could do some fancier, you know, at the, at that point.
Okay. I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want to take up too much time, so-
That's fine.
Connie, if you can- Connie, if you can keep your thoughts and email them, and we'll, we'll email those to Stewart's. You know, if we're giving the, the public two to three minutes, I don't think we should take any longer than that. But, Barb, do you have anything? You're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
There I go. Um, I feel differently about that. I, I haven't really gone around the whole house, but I don't see anything that I, I find attractive, to be honestly, about that house. And I do feel that we could play around with some of the design of the, of the new building. And I agree with Connie to maybe add some elements that are possibly throughout the village because it really is a beautiful village. But I, I personally don't see anything to add from the house that's going to be destroyed.
Okay. Thank you.
This Connie, I just would agree. My focus was more on, on the village itself and the central business district. The look of the village, not necessarily the specific house.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I agree, I agree, Connie. Yep, yep. Steve?
Um, as far as, as far as the landscaping situation goes, and we were discussing, I, I am a great supporter of Arbivites. I think, I'm certainly not somebody who's an expert in that department, but I've driven around in a lot of areas, and one of them that really kind of comes, I, I think they make a great barrier. One of the areas that I've often seen is down near the Colony Country Club down in Forrestville. You're heading towards Stonewell. Before the old entrance, there used to be, there's a house there before Levy's, or Levees. And they built Arbor, they planted Arbivites, and they grew very quickly and made a tremendously nice hedge, which really seems to do a, a nice job. So I, I would go on record as saying that, that I would like to see that looked at and investigated. But I guess we have to kind of wait till the official landscaping report comes in, right?
Yeah, no, but it's good to get the ideas out there now.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, there is no official landscape report. The, the plan was developed by a landscape architect. So if you guys want to switch the species, that's strictly or wholly up to you. The code calls for pines. But again, it's not an element that needs a variance. It's a planning board can, can waive or alter the design features. So if you guys say Arbivite, you know, I'll put them in.
Okay.
Barb, I would go with the Arbivite too. And I think they, they do provide a lot of protection as they get bigger.
Okay, good. All right. I think I've got all of the board members. Dan, do you have anything more to add as, as far as your level of expertise goes on what folks have said about the Arbivites versus Austrian pines or anything else?
Arbivite will work as a screen. The thing is with vegetation, you'll never get the solid feel of a fence with vegetation. So Arbivite, if it does last, and, and 20 years from now, it might be a solid, you know, vegetated barrier, but you don't always get that. So that's why the idea of, you know, mixed evergreens and deciduous was recommended to provide a screening. I could take a look at the landscape plan when it's resubmitted. I did, I only took a quick look at it the other day. The other comment I would make is the vegetation that's in the area that's by the intersection, that's actually within the highway right of way should be protected. Currently, the landscape plan shows a lawn area. It's a vegetated area right now, planting. It should be retained. So I, I think once the landscape plan's resubmitted, based on the comments, we could take a look at it and go from there. I'm not against Arbivite, like a red cedar or white cedar, but it's just an option. But there's other ways to provide a screening as well, not just having a solid barrier of Arbivite.
Okay.
Yeah, the, we acknowledge one of the comments from Barton La Judas or one of the planning board members was that the DOT right of way was designated on or something, and then that will obviously be corrected in the future submission.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I think at this point.
I had one more comment on, while we're on landscaping. There's nothing to do with Arbivites. On, on the Altamont Boulevard side where they're going to be closing in the one egress, it looks like on the current landscape plans, a call for creeping juniper, which would be ground cover, I assume. And I thought the idea of the landscaping was to, to, again, I'll use the word soften or screen the parking area. I was wondering if that could be built up to something. I don't know if it needs to be trees or more, more like what's on the, the corner now. I'm not sure what those are, like dogwood or.
You want to create a canopy type thing?
Well, something more than ground cover along that.
All right. Um, I noted it. I'm trying to take notes as we go here so that I can send them off to Stewart's, but thankfully this is being recorded, so I can refer to that. But at this point, I, I would like to turn it over to the public comment. And again, if we can please try to be respectful, I know we took up some time. But who's, who wants to speak first? Maybe Carol? I would give you the option to speak first. Are you out there, Carol?
Here. All right, how's that?
I'm good now. There you go. Hi.
Thanks. Hi, and thank you. Well, officially, let me say Carol Rothenberg, 111 Helderburg Avenue. And I'll begin by stating that I understand how challenged we all are by this virtual format for a public hearing. And I'm number one, being challenged here. So bear with me. To make my request clear and more detailed, I submitted to all of you last week my letter of concerns with photographs. Thank you, Deb. I understand that you've referred to some of those. Appreciate that. I'm going to limit most of my requests for your serious considerations to my own property as I'm trying to secure some semblance of privacy, reduction in noise and light pollution, and keep the damage to my property and tree and hedges to a minimum. So I have six concerns. I know Chuck has already had some discussion here with the HVAC units. But if you could please study the placement of the condensing and HVAC units that are placed behind the building indicated on the southwest side. So this is facing my property. And if you've been up to my property, it's a porch and bedroom is above it. And that's less than 20 feet from the property line. So I'm requesting that the four units be placed along the southeast wall that faces the creek side. Then the electrical panel box could be moved to the back corner on the back side, still allowing for easy access. Maybe only one ice machine, like on Western Avenue. Thanks Chuck, I know that you had mentioned that. Also Rick Grant, who's a local electrical engineer, wrote in a proposal referencing the above suggestions. He feels it's possible. He looked at the plans. He went to the local store here. He also drove out to the Western Avenue store. So that was his conclusion. I had another professional look at it as well, and they thought that was possible. Number two, because of those units, there needs to be the stone or cement wall. Then a vinyl fence on top of the wall to try and block the 24/7 noises. So that leaves about four feet for planting. So I do understand, for those of us listening tonight, that most of us would feel that four feet's not too big for tree plantings. So my request that the condensing and HVAC units be moved to the creek side would alleviate the need for all of this encroachment so close to my property. And then the fence could be placed closer to Stewart's building. And there would be room for appropriate plantings. So I see that as a win-win for all of us. Possibly not even the need for a fence at all. Number three would be to please be attentive to the creek side landscape. I'm requesting that rock gabions be placed along the creek side where the four trees were removed. I now have rock gabions along my side of the property line that were installed by Pollard. Where they end, there has been erosion of my property and on the adjoining property. So the roots will rot minus the living trees, and then the erosion will continue. Also, the creek rises in floods, and therefore I pay flood insurance as requested by FEMA. So that is indicative of, you know, more erosion, creek erosion, bank erosion, I should say. Number four, if you could please be attentive to the runoff from the back of the store is there is traditionally standing water in that area each spring. I didn't notice gutters on the back of the store. I saw from Chuck's plan, there's some a way for the draining of the water, and I, I have to say I haven't studied that. But I didn't notice any gutters there. If there are gutters, where would the water drain to? If not addressed, I'm requesting consideration for a French drain system that would keep the water from pooling and be able to move away from my property in the back of the store. A cement wall in that area plus the drainage issues certainly complicates proper drainage. So that's another reason maybe the wall could wouldn't, might not be there if the HVAC units could be moved and the condensing units. And then number five, there are lots of discussion on appropriate plantings. I can see that's already happened. I suggest that the planning board possibly consult with Nan Stolzenberg's plans. She recommends, you know, various plantings there. The trees certainly will help filter out light and help soften the harshness of that treeless landscape. I know that's been discussed somewhat already. Although some people thought that the tree removal wouldn't really be that bad, turns out that our neighborhood is already seeing the effects. So some car lights now shining into living and bedroom windows nightly is something that people are seeing from the traffic that comes on the Altamont Boulevard side and pulls into the parking lot. And once the house is removed, I assume there'll be more light and noise pollution. So number six would be demolishing the house. I know that's, those specifics are yet to come. But if you could please give serious considerations to the dust, need for asbestos investigation with possible floor tiles, and how to keep my property safe. Or any of the other activity that would be going on at the funeral home in our neighborhood. Because you can imagine how that's going to be. So that's the short list, but thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration for all of these, you know, various consider, various serious considerations for me and my property and on our, our neighborhood up here. And again, appreciate, even though it's a virtual meeting, you know, the opportunity to speak. So thank you very much, Deb and everyone.
Thank you, Carolyn. Like I said, you know, right now, I'm pretty sure we'll be keeping the public hearing open for 10 days. So whatever comes out of tonight, if anyone has any further comments on it, you know, you'll have the opportunity for either email or to drop it in the drop slot at the Village Board.
Thank you.
Or, sorry, Village Hall. So who would like to go next? I'm trying to see if there's a hand waiting. You might want to just speak up.
Can you see my hand, Deb?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, I, this is Kirby Wilson, 272 Brandle Road. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine, yes.
Good. I wanted to say that I support Carol Rothenberg's request to mitigate the impact of, of building the larger store within four feet of her hedge. Carol's taking the major brunt of this big project and on the value of her property and the quality of, of life. So please seriously consider Carol's request. I have three questions myself. The first is for Chair Deb Heck. I was wondering if the questions I sent in my April 20th letter to you were forwarded to Stewart's? And how we can get the answers?
The questions, most of the questions that you asked were also questions and comments by B&amp;L, Barton and La Judas. So did you have an opportunity to look at the questions and answers that were on the Village website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I, I, I thought, and I might be wrong, but I thought most of those questions that you asked were also asked by either us or Barton and La Judas. If not, I will certainly forward this again in its entirety to Stewart's and ask them to comment on it. But again, I, I, I might be wrong, but I, I, I really did think that most of them were addressed.
Well, I think some of them were, but there were some errors that I'll just highlight. There was a conflicts between the acreage figures in the report. On page one, it said 0.78 acres for the whole project. And then on page 97, it's, there was a map that said 0.84 acres.
Where, where are you getting that? Is that from the SWEP or where?
That was from the SWEP, from MJ Engineering.
Okay.
They also had an error on page 15 where they put the site elevation at zero, which should be 463 feet. They also had an error with a page on peak discharges for well-known urgent care and a different project number on page 17.
I'm not sure where that came from.
Well, I, I, I think it points to a little sloppiness that I was concerned about, but maybe there's a reason that it's included. I also had some questions about whether there's any soil or groundwater beneath the pavement that's going to be affected.
And that was, I know that was answered in, in the SWEP. Stormwater.
It, it wasn't real clear to me. I know they did address some of the systems, but.
It wasn't clear to me either, but I'm not a SWEP expert, so I, I guess we'll have to leave that to the engineers and what I'll do. And I, I'm pretty sure they received on this, but what I will do is I will send your email again to Stewart's and to Barton La Judas and ask them to review each and every question. Does that work?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. My second question was about Stewart's agreed this Friday to provide 13 additional documents to the Village Engineers, including a permit request and, and plans for demolition of the two-family house, the store, the gas pumps, canopy and pavement. And I wondered if there'd be an, an extension or another public hearing scheduled to allow public input about those new plans.
There will be, like, like, like I said, right now, in all probability, there will be another, there will be an extension to this public hearing that will allow either email or drop to the Village offices any concerns, anything that's being brought up tonight, anything that Stewart's needs to address tonight. So I'm thinking 10 to 14 more days of public comment will be allowed.
Does that mean a new reports, 13 new reports and revised drawings will be posted online?
Yes.
Okay, good. My third question was, does Stewart's insurance cover financial losses due to force majeure? And what financial assurances can Stewart give us that construction will not be halted midway due to losses caused by the current pandemic, leaving a, a, a big eyesore for months or years?
I don't know Chuck, if you want to address these, all, all these questions at the end so that we can get as many questions in as possible. I, I'm sure that some questions are going to be redundant.
I would, I would prefer to wait till the end. So if there's a thematic, you know, sense of questions, I don't think that anyone's going to. going to be as detailed as Ms. Wilson was with their reading of the SWAP. But I do want to make it clear, we're not providing 13 new documents. There, there are no 13 new documents. There might be 13 instances where we've said we will submit with new material, but that's not a new document. So I just want to make sure that, that's clear.
My reading of the, of the attachments online did refer to 13 new submissions in addition to changes to the drawings, but I could be wrong.
Well, there might be an instance where we said something along the lines of comment acknowledged and provided on future submissions, but, but that doesn't generate 13 new documents, like, that, that would probably be included in, you know, all plan revisions.
If anything changes, if any, there are any major changes to the plan as a result of tonight's meeting or as a result of any questions coming in from the public or the planning board, we will make sure that those questions are posted and those answers are posted, whether it's from Barton and La Judas or Stuart's, are posted on the village website. Does that work?
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, all right. Everybody's going over a little bit, but I, I certainly understand it. So who's next? I, I can't see hands, so I'm going to rely on everybody else to see hands.
Jeff Pearlie, you have, Deb.
Hello, Jeff. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, well, thank you, thank you very much. And Deb, I, I, as you know, I, I sent to the board a lengthy letter submitted today and that's why I'm, I'm glad that you're, you're looking to extend the public comment period for, give folks a chance to hopefully digest some of the points and the analysis contained in that letter. The main, the main thrust was to introduce for the board's consideration, the question of the proposed design by Stuart's and the impact of that design on the existing historic nature of the existing commercial district. And it's really kind of following up on comments made by both Connie and Barbara earlier in the meeting. And to put those comments in, in the context of the actual standards that the board needs to consider before giving affirmative approval to both the special use and the site plan. Section 35536 ER of the village code requires that in order to issue the special use and the, and to approve the site plan as proposed, this board has to make an affirmative finding that there is no adverse impact on the character or integrity of any land use within the immediate neighborhood having unique recreational, cultural, historical, archaeological, or other special community values. So it's not just something that, you know, board members would like for Stuart's to, out of the kindness of their heart, incorporate this or that. It's actually a requirement of the board that you, in order to approve what Stuart submits, you have to find that what they have submitted, in fact, does not have any adverse impact on the existing historical and cultural character of the, of the surrounding neighborhood. And frankly, I think with the proposal that Stuart's has submitted, I think that's going to be a very, very hard task. I don't know how you would necessarily characterize the architectural style of the building proposed, whether it's neo-colonial or sort of suburban commercial, but it's not Victorian and it's not of the type that characterizes the buildings that characterize the central business district, which is the reason.
Well, it, it is, it does look exactly like Altamont Corners. So, I mean, there, there is precedent for that design in the business district.
Now, well, I would, I would disagree with that because, I mean, because if you look at Altamont Corners actually did, I think, a much more thorough job of the scale of the features that they incorporated. And they went very much off of the train station. And to Jeff Thomas's credit, they spent, I think, some money and some time to make sure that the incorporation of the features that make Altamont Corners actually a contributing building to the historical character, because they, they did in fact replicate both the cupulas and the eyebrow dormer that are the central features of the train station next door.
So for you, it's more that the, the, the scale and size of the features than the features themselves? I'm just trying to understand where you're going.
Well, scale and size actually determines whether a particular feature is in fact a Victorian feature or a colonial feature or a modern feature, right? You can, you can put a cupula on a building and that doesn't make it a Victorian building if in fact the cupula is colonial in design, right? So, so, and the, the, these are the details, but it's the sum, sum of these various details that define whether a particular building has an adverse or a positive impact on the surrounding historical character. That's how the National Trust for Historic Preservation determines whether an area qualifies to be a historic district or whether an individual building qualifies. So, and I think it's, you know, however you characterize, and if you break down, and that's what the attempt of my letter was, to break down the various features and to look at the dormers, to look at the gable, to look at the use of stone, to look at the cupula and determine, you know, are those truly consistent or are they actually kind of an affront to the Victorian style? Because, you know, I think it's axiomatic that if you place a neo-colonial or a suburban commercial building in the middle of a unusually integral historic commercial district, that new building is going to have an adverse impact on the integrity of the district. And that's exactly the standard that the planning board is tasked with determining, right?
Hopefully, we will, hopefully, we'll be able to come to some type of compromise that everyone is happy with. And, you know, what we view, obviously, you know, we have a lot to review here, Jeff, tonight, and we'll take your letter into consideration, especially since we only got it at 3 o'clock today. We, we really can't, you know, give too much time to that, but I, I understand what you're saying and I, I kind of, I, I like what you, how you phrase that about the scale and the size and what the difference is. And, you know, I made a note for myself. So I thank you for that and, you know, I hope that you'll understand when I say I'd like to move on to the next resident, but I, I do thank you and, you know, we will definitely take your letter into consideration.
Yeah, and I would just, I would just close by saying, I think that it, it's, it's not that difficult to do as Barbara and Connie referenced. You need to only spend 15 minutes to walk around Altamont and, and look at some of the key features of the buildings that define the area such that the national register saw fit to recognize it. And incorporate those features as they exist in the historic district into the new proposal. That would make a world of difference and would enable the board to conclude that this building, though new, can still make a positive contribution to the historic district, not be, have an adverse impact by being, you know, something that is contrary to the overall design standards of all the other buildings that currently exist.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who do we have next? Anybody on the phone?
Hi, I would like to speak.
Who is that, Fran?
Yeah, Fran. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Would you like to go first?
Whoever wants to go first, just say your name so I know who you are.
I'll be second. This is Fran, I'll wait.
Okay.
My name is Laura Stalmaschek. I live at 116 Maple Avenue. And I just had a few comments based on what I was hearing now. I'd like to comment that the representative from Stuart's, Mr. Marshall, said that they consulted a landscape architect. First he said it was a trained, or excuse me, I think a certified arborist, and then he switched and he said it was a landscape architect. Those are two different types of materials. Landscape architects are hardscape people generally. They are not trained plant professionals. That is not their primary focus. So I'd like to just point that out. And he's couching it as if it is a choice simply between arbiviti and some manner of pine. He didn't name tree and pine. But of course, it's silly. It's not a choice between two paths. Mr. Hitt pointed out, probably a mix of deciduous, deciduous and coniferous would work best, perhaps all shrubs. There's certainly a world of options of tall, polymer shrubs that could be introduced as well. Heights and specifics, but more than five minutes worth of thought would generate more options than the very generic arbiviti. That's going to be a very unlovely option.
Is this Laura?
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, you were breaking up a little bit, so I wasn't exactly sure who, who we had on there. But we're, we've benefited from the fact that our new alternate, Dan Hitt, is a registered landscape architect and he has already contributed a lot to, to this. So believe me when I say we will be leaning on him a lot and going with his suggestions and asking Stuart's to go with his suggestions and hopefully come up with a nice mix of, you know, plantings and ground cover and, and things that could provide maybe a canopy that might slow traffic down if you get more of a tunneling effect. There are options out there and, you know, hopefully we'll be able to work through these options and come up to something that will be a, a advantage and something that people would want to see as opposed not see in the village.
Excuse me, I'd also like to say that other people pointed, Mr. Hitt's comments were very informative and very interesting and very specific, which I certainly appreciated. I'd also like to say that Ms. Rue pointed out that, and maybe it was Mr. Hitt as well, that the, the front plantings do need to remain. There should be planting that soften on all sides of the building. And as Carol Rothenberg also pointed out, along the, the stream side, so we're not just talking about one small row along the back. The other thing I would like to point out is that there's talk of a vinyl fence, I believe, on the back. And that will amplify sound, I believe, so I do hope that the plantings will work with the fence to soften the sound because, you know, a hard surface, you know, will amplify it, there will be echo. The other point I would leave beyond the plantings is that I would love to ask what the roof materialized, I believe, asphalt. Now, if the building would be used, given Carol's view, it seems to me that it's sort of unkind to make this poor woman stare at, you know, a very large expanse, expanse of asphalt, which is, you know, a road, so she'd be looking essentially at a shingled road. I would ask that you consider to have, you know, as Stuart's, you know, changes their design, hopefully, that they will be asked to use a higher grade roofing material, perhaps metal, something that will work better and that will give Carol something, a little bit more to look for than, you know, look at than a shingled road. And also referencing Mr. Pearlie's very, very interesting comments, one thing I'd like to point out is that both, it's not a Victorian district, it's, you know, in the village, it is a historic district, even though it is not a historic, it's a historic village, even though it's not a historic district, you know, in name, but, but it's also a mountain village. And the design that the village has allowed Stuart to put forward is simply one of their stable of, I think, it was talked about at the zoning board meeting that they made so a concession.
Laura, you are breaking, Laura, you are breaking up. Laura, you are breaking up bad. We can't, we, we're not hearing you hardly at all. Are you on a cell phone?
No, I'm on a computer. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but you keep breaking up.
Mr. Pearlie's comments reference that this is a historic, a Victorian village. It is also a mountain village. And Stuart's is putting forward a, a design that is one of the generic, maybe six designs that they use throughout the region. And there's nothing vernacular about it, as Mr. Pearlie pointed out. And so I would ask that you not, you use the word, the phrase compromise. You shouldn't have to compromise. The point of the zoning board and the planning board are to protect the interests of the village and I would like to see you do so. Thank you, I'm finished.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, Fran? Are you muted?
Yes, I was. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good, okay. Okay, Deb, members of the board, thanks so much for listening to my comments tonight. I just want to acknowledge first that I know that a lot of people think that the approval process for Stuart's has already gone on too long and that with the zoning board approvals, people probably think that a lot of things have been decided that I am not entirely resigned to, they're being decided. The only things that I can say for sure are that we have approved certain variances that, from the codes and also that the, that the property itself has been rezoned for commercial use. But I think virtually everything else is left on the table. And so I would see the planning board as the appropriate place to raise things that may already have been raised and, before other boards. But I think that this is the board where the real decisions can and should be made. And I also think that a public hearing like this is a genuine opportunity to be heard and not a pro forma exercise. So with that in mind, I would say that what we still really need to look at is the size of the building, the square footage and height, the lot configuration, including the dumpster, which is also something that's been mentioned, landscaping, signage, lighting and the drainage plan. And I would say in terms of the, the size of the building, the variances do in fact allow the building to be built within a stone's throw of 119, 111 Hildeberg Avenue, but that doesn't mean that it should be built that close. And I think we've been given an, an alternative that's false. Either we have a 3300 foot, 3300 foot square building or there is no new building at all. So I think there are gradations. And I think that Stuart's could build a smaller store. It naturally, Stuart would like to go with a design that's already in place, perhaps in this instance using the Latham model, but Stuart's has resources to tailor the building to Altamont and better fit in with it and not be such a, a burden for the neighbors. So, and as an aside, I, I would, I think it's important to say this, and that is that in past comments, I've, I've used, I've referred to the address 11, 111 Hildeberg Avenue, but I do think it's important to remind people that that house has an actual person living in it and her name is Carol Rothenberg, as you know. I, I know her also. She keeps up her property well and she is really bearing the brunt of the burden for Stuart's expansion. And that's, that's an unfair thing and it's an unnecessary thing. I think if, if we knew our neighbor was, had a, had a fire and we, was in some sort of distress, as a community, we'd come together to help. And I think, really I see this as an instance where Carol is being injured in terms of her property value, in terms of her loss of privacy and just generally in, in the way of her, her lifestyle. So I think we should all speak out. I think the lighting is, it's dense, I think it's too extensive. I think the signage, I'm, I'm a little worried about the scrolling that I heard mentioned tonight by Mr. Marshall. I think we, regardless of how much scrolling is done, I think that, that calls even more attention to the sign which looks very large and extensively lighted. And as far as the landscaping is concerned, I would echo Carol's point that we should have large trees put on the creekside because the neighbors now are experiencing light pollution. We have, and I'm glad, if I understood it, did you say that we do have, there is a, a village architect who is consulting with Stuart's when we're giving approval? I, I won't, I won't ask you to answer that question, but I hope that that's the case because I think that that's a strong point that the zoning. think that that's a strong point that the zoning board made.
Okay, Fran, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up here.
Wrap it up.
It's been about six minutes. So we're trying to give everyone a chance to speak here.
Thanks, Deb. I have one more point, and I'll make that very fast, very quick. And that is, I noticed that in the schematics, one of the pumps will be dedicated to diesel fuel. And so I'm wondering if that doesn't, Mr. Marshall has indicated in the past that there would not be an increase in the number of customers. At one time and then another time, there might be an increase of 10 customers per day. But I'm wondering, but obviously there was going to be a difference in the kind of customers or the type of business with diesel fuel being introduced. And if you look at the size of the fuel tanks and extrapolate, it looks like perhaps 30% of Stewarts' gas or fuel business will now be diesel fuel. And that means that we will see probably more truck traffic. So that sort of explains to me why Stewarts wants so much pavement and a high canopy over the tank or the gas pumps.
Okay, Fran, I have to stop you here. We have, it's getting late and we have to let a bunch of other people talk quickly as far as the diesel is concerned. They're not adding another pump. It'll be, one side will be diesel, the other side will be just regular gasoline. The size of the canopy and all that, that's code. They have no choice. So, but, you know, we will.
It's still diesel now, though, right?
We will certainly ask Stewarts to mitigate in any way possible truck traffic, and we'll take it from there. Hopefully, that's what we can do to make things a little bit better. So, but anyway, I'd like to turn it over to the next person.
Okay, thank you.
Adam Chairman, I apologize. This is Nancy, your reporter.
Hi Nancy.
Hello. I did not get Fran's last name. Could you give that to me, please?
Fran, do you want to, her last name is Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Do we have anyone else on the phone or that's waving that I can't see? I'm trying to scroll through here, but.
This is Harvey. I'm having trouble with my camera. I'm having trouble with my camera, so.
You're on the clock, Harvey.
All right. Hope I get as much as everyone else, but.
You will.
Well, I guess one thing is that, you know, we should take the time to do it right. That's the one thing. And it's a little bit of an issue. And so the fact that, you know, some of the comments may go longer, I, they're all good. People aren't really repeating anything that what they're saying. They're all individual points. But as far as time goes, I would like to see, not so much even a 10-day extension, but another meeting so that everything is up to date. By that, I mean, I've heard many references to this plan is going to be changed, that's going to be adapted, you're going to make some additions. And if you just, if it just gets dumped into an email and sent to the board, there's no chance for this back and forth. And so in terms of doing it right the first time, and for an issue of full transparency, I think that you should really try to schedule another public hearing so that all these things can be visited and thoroughly vetted, if you will. Kirby has some really good technical questions, and it's very impressive what she did with that. And I think the only way to really do that is to have another hearing rather than just opening it up for 10 days, or have a televised hearing at the end of 10 days so that the answers can be provided, put out there, and then there's an opportunity for the public to comment on it. I would like to also hear, I know Dean is there, and I would like to hear some of his comments on this. My understanding, as a former trustee, and the way the role is as a liaison, he really needs to be called on, I guess. He's sort of there to observe and then report back. But you've got someone who is an architect, has a whole career as an architect. He does this for a living, and I'd like to hear his comments on some of these points that were raised. I would also like to comment about the salvage elements, possibly historic Altamont. There are elements there that can be used, like they were saying about, you know, doors and trim and things like that. I mean, rather than just tossing it away, you know, just like historic, what is it, historic Albany, I think, has a warehouse where you could take some of these things. I've bought things there myself. So, you know, if you're gonna lose it, you might as well try to save some of that as much as you can. And so I think that that would be something that some people that have some knowledge should be able to go in there and, you know, strip it out and do what they want with it. And then the other thing is, you know, as far as what Jeff Pearlie said, I'm just going to reinforce that, that, you know, this is the character and the nature of the village. I get the, I don't want to overstate it, but, you know, so many people put in so many hundreds and hundreds of hours over two years to do this comprehensive plan. And it's like a big middle finger to say, we don't care. We're going to give you the rezone. We're going to give Stewarts whatever they want. And so I would like to at least try to get as much possible done that preserves the character and the nature of the village, like what Fran was saying and what Jeff was saying. This is why we live here. People don't move here because there's a big Stewarts. People move here because of the character of the village. So I guess that's pretty close to the three, but I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you. I'm sorry, you're on mute, Deb. I can't hear you.
I need you to run this meeting. Anyway, one thing I would like to say is, I totally agree with you as far as architectural salvage and that type of thing. That is one of the questions we sent to Stewarts. As far as letting someone in the building goes to get that, I don't know that that could be done. We'd have to discuss that. But, you know, that's certainly something that we will ask Stewarts to take under serious consideration. But you were good, Harvey. You were like, really, you were right on target there. You're just about four and a half minutes, so. So who's next? I know you want to have Dean comment at one point, but I'd like to give the public a little bit more opportunity to comment here.
Kristen Casey has a question, Deb.
Hi, Kristen. Go ahead.
Hi, y'all. I have just two general areas of concern. One is lighting. I think that the lighting of this site is going to be important to how this whole thing feels when it's all done. And I have been assured by the mayor that when they put in the new LED lights around the village, that they will all be 2900 or close to that Kelvins. Now Kelvin is, there's three variables that have to do with lights. There's the color of the lights, which is Kelvin. There's the foot candles, and there's the lumens. And I really did my homework as much as I could. And every single one of the lights, at least on the plan, says that they will be 4,000K, which is a brighter, a whiter light. It's not as warm. It's gonna, so this area, all of the lights, however many there are, 22, whatever, will have a different color than all the rest of the village lights. So that will actually make it kind of stick out and be a little different. Now, I know that they're going to have downlights, and I know they're going to be shielded, and I know they're doing everything they can in terms of how much the light spreads, but the color of the light will be different. And I really hope that the planning board can ask them to change the Kelvin to be consistent with the village. I talked to both Jeff Thomas, because I think he's done a pretty good job about making it feel consistent with the village, and I talked to Rick Grant, and who I think is an electrical engineer. But anyway, they all said that the 2900 is important, and it would be a wonderful thing if we could say, hey, Stewarts, let's just fit in with the rest of the village. So I'm hoping that's something that seriously could be considered. The other thing I hope, it's so that we can do an analysis, is to take the current lighting at the current Stewarts and do an analysis of what the lumens and the foot candles and the Kelvins are for right now, so that we can then compare it to what it's going to be. Because some of them, like the foot candles for the canopy, are quite high. And the lumens for the soffits are as high as the pole lamps, and there's a bunch of them. I mean, there's analysis that has to be done there so that we don't end up with something that we go, oh, gosh, why didn't we think about that? I also noticed that the pole light over at Jeff Thomas's is a much more in keeping with the character of the village, and I'm wondering why we couldn't have pole lights at Stewarts that are consistent with what Jeff Thomas has, rather than something modern, which is what the lights proposed for Stewarts are. So that's lighting. And then the other thing I had was on landscaping. Dan Hitt, I'm sure he doesn't remember me, but I was very impressed with him when we were doing the new road, Main Street through Altamont, and worked with him on landscaping then. So I have real respect for his expertise. And so I agree that it looks on the plans like there would be a lawn in where now we have mature growth shielding the corner there, shielding the biggest, the bigger parking lot that we were going to have. And I was not happy to see that that would be a lawn, and I think the mature plantings should stay, and I think that's what Dan was saying. I also was concerned about the size of the junipers that were all going to be like ground cover along Altamont Road, and I agree with what Connie said. Those should be at least two feet tall bushes of some kind. And again, we have a much larger parking lot, so if we're trying to cushion it, then let's do as much of this kind of landscaping that will make it feel more neighbor-hoody through landscaping. And the last thing is that I did some homework on the pines and spruce, the Austrian pine and black something or other that were going to be between Carol's property and Stewarts. And then she told me that there's only four feet between her fence and the retaining wall. Well, that's hardly enough to put a big tree in. So I started to look at arbivites, and there is, there are some, I think they're called, if I can find it, green giant arbivites that grow like three feet a year. And I think trying to put something there that mimics what was there before, that's why I like the spruce in the Austrian pines, because they get big, just like all these big wonderful trees that are part of Altamont. If we have to have an arbiviti, which is, you know, won't be as high and big and beautiful in the long run, we can get ones that will grow, you know, taller than, you can buy it 10 feet and will be much taller, space them close enough that they will provide a shield within a shorter number of years than 20 years. Try and get something more immediate. So that's, those are my issues. And the only last thing I would ask is, so what happens now? Like, let's say at 10, there's 10 days more of the public hearing, and then does the planning board get together and talk, or how do you decide what you ask Stewarts to do and what you don't decide to ask them to do? And has that become a public document, or is that all discussed at the next planning board meeting at the end of May? Just what is the process, I guess, is my only question.
Yes, yes, and yes. One thing that I wanted to say to you about the lighting is, we've already addressed, we have a planning board, one of our questions to Stewarts was to not make Stewarts look like an oasis of light in the middle of Altamont. So hopefully, they will take that into consideration, and I know, I'm sure Chuck will comment on this. As far as the.
Can I just say something? Excuse me for interrupting, but his response to that question was that the foot candles that are right around the lights by the street will be lighter, but they'll be decimals.
Right.
Along the, well, that, he didn't address the soffit, and he didn't address the canopy, which could be, so.
Which is why I'm saying, I'm sure Chuck will address some of these questions. But as far as the 10 days, 14 days, however we decide to do this, right now, and, you know, we have to make a motion to do this. This is just something that I had a feeling was going to happen. Right now, the plan is to hold the public hearing open for 10 days, not to close it. That gives the public time to digest. It gives Stewarts time to digest. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some of the questions answered tonight. I don't want it to go till midnight. I don't want people to lose interest. But, you know, however we decide, I think we've been very transparent. We've put as much as we possibly can out there on the village website. Everyone will be informed. Everyone will know what's going on. We won't try to do anything on the sly. Whether or not we will hold another meeting, that the public will be allowed to comment, I can't answer that right now. I'm going to have to consult with Allison, our attorney, and the rest of the board to see what the best options would be for us right now. So, that being said, I don't know.
When would you take action, I guess, is my question. I guess you have to take some action, right? So that would have to be at a public meeting.
Well, we would, it would have to be, and there's a difference, what you're saying, is there would have to be an action. There would have to be a decision. There would have to be whatever at a public meeting.
Right. Not a public hearing, a public meeting.
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
Anyway.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Kristen. Do we have someone else?
Steve Wickham, Deb.
Steve Wickham, you're up. You're on the clock, Steve.
Hi, I'm Steve Wickham. I live at 235 Executive Drive in Gildwin, and I'm Chair of the Steering Committee for the Gildwin Coalition for Responsible Growth. I just wanted to make a brief comment tonight to support the residents of Altamont who oppose the current plans for this proposal. The primary objection to this project is that the applicant seems to have, seems to have basically convinced the village of Altamont to bend the rules for them for problems that they've pretty much entirely created on their own. And this really could be done by, they could really solve these problems, for the most part, by just proposing a slightly smaller store. It's understandable that a large company with many locations would like to standardize their facility to the largest extent that they possibly can, and it's within their rights to ask for everything that they've asked for. But this is, just because they've asked for it, doesn't mean that the village has to give it to them. Large corporations like to pout and shout and stamp their feet and threaten to take their marbles home and basically set up a false choice. But it's certainly very doubtful that they would give up entirely on a project on the central corner of Altamont. So I just want to say, please deny this application as it has been suggested and requested. If Stewarts wants to operate in the village of Altamont, they should build a store that fits within the existing lot and within the village of Altamont itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Allison, I don't know if you want to touch on this, but, you know, when someone uses phrases like bending the rules, that sort of worries me in the sense that everything that we've done so far, everything each board has done is within the rules, within the laws. The variances have been granted. The village board rezoned the property. They went through the secret process. There's nothing that we have bended the rules for. But Allison, do you want to address that at all, or did I sum it up okay?
Allison, you're muted.
Deb, I think you're right on. You know, our village zoning law is set up with some inherent flexibility where, you know, as a property owner, you have the ability to request a zone change. You have the ability to request area variances. And our code has established certain uses that it has determined should be permitted in the central business district. should be permitted in the central business district by issuance of a special use permit and site plan review. And under New York law, if a use is permitted by special use permit, you know, it's considered consistent with the, the um, existing uses and character of that district, provided that it requires an enhanced level of review to make sure that the standard zoning code can be met for each particular project. So, you know, the, going through these processes and these reviews, and it's, it's not, you know, in any sense bending any rules. It's the, the law is set up just for this, this purpose. So that an applicant can come in and request a use of their property and, and be required to go through a process that will require a heightened level of review just to ensure that, um, you know, the standards and the, and the goals that we aspire to achieve through our, our land use plans and our zoning are achieved. So the village has, you know, taken great care to go through these processes. First, in our seeker review under the environmental law for the state of New York, then a zone change review through the village board, then a review by the ZBA for the area variances. And now we're before the planning board for a review of the special use permit and, and overall site plan. So, you know, this is a project and a, a process, I think, that, you know, the residents of Altamont should take comfort in that, you know, that their government is set up to go through this heightened review for projects like this. And everyone has an opportunity to be heard. And in this case, you know, through four separate review processes. Um, and so ultimately, each board determines if the application meets the standard depending on what their jurisdiction is and what approval they're seeking from that board. And, and we're going through this process. And, and now it's at the planning board. And I think, um, I think the processes work very well so far.
Thank you, Allison. Okay, um, do we have someone else that would like to speak? On the phone, wave your hand. I'm trying to page through.
I'd like to hear from Dean.
Who said that?
Harvey.
Harvey? Okay, well.
Get his comments on this.
If the public has nothing else to say, Dean, not that you're not the public, but um, I, I just wanna make sure everybody gets their say, at least tonight. So Dean, you're, you're up, if, if you don't mind commenting.
Okay, then.
I, I do have one comment.
I can try. Um, first, I, I can certainly wait.
Dean, you're, you're breaking up. I don't know if someone else is trying to talk at the same time? Um.
I think Ted Newman wanted to talk.
Right. Oh, okay, hold on, hold on, Dean.
I did, I did have one thing to say.
Okay, go ahead, Ted.
I appreciate what the attorney said, and I appreciate what Mr. Wickham said. I don't know that the village has been bending rules necessarily, but they do seem to be pretty tone deaf as to the public's comment. The public comment is great, but it should be listened to occasionally. And I think more than half of the village has been pretty adamant that they didn't like the Stewart's plan from the get-go. And yet, there's been a super majority for Stewart's in their favor by the village. The majority of the village was against the variance request. But the boards said, go right ahead. So there might not be a bending of the rules. I appreciate that we've done everything according to Hoyle. But it would be nice if the boards actually listened to the comments. I think Jeff's comments earlier about the building looking more Victorian are very important, and I don't think we need to compromise at all. I think they need to do something to make it look like a village building. And it's up to the planning board now, as the final resort, to actually listen to the public and make Stewart's do something that the public is asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. And, and you know, you, you said that we should listen to the public every now and then. I, I think that no matter what board you're on, I think you should always listen to the public. We can't always do what the public wants. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm always listening and I'm always trying to do what I think's best for the village and what the village thinks is best. So, you know, just, just saying that you think we should sometimes listen. I think if, if you're a public figure, you should listen. That, that's just my comment. Uh, but go ahead, Dean.
Thank you, Deb. Sometimes this computer does break up, so I apologize. Um, first, I want to acknowledge that I can certainly look into the proposal architecturally, as has been suggested. I have to first acknowledge, though, that what Jeff put together and submitted today, which again, is kind of a time, timeframe crunch, uh, is very, very comprehensive. I'm not sure, actually, I'm pretty sure I couldn't do a better job. But I'm certainly willing to weigh in on what Jeff documented. Uh, the other thing I need to add is, this is really strictly at the discretion and direction of this board, as far as involving the ins. Uh, because as liaison, as you pointed out earlier, um, really in a receiving mode for the village board at this point, until so directed.
Well, I, you know, I, I know that, speaking for myself only, uh, we obviously value your opinion. And you wouldn't be the liaison to the board if the village board didn't uh, value your opinion. So, um, like I said before, I, 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 nothing is going to be decided tonight. Nothing might not be decided for another two, three meetings. I don't know that. I don't know that. But there's certainly a lot of information that has come in, certainly in the past few days. Jeff's uh, letter, Kirby's questions about the SWP. Uh, I thought was addressed by B and L, but I will certainly send these out again um, to B and L and to Stewart's. Uh, but at that, I, I just don't know how we, we uh, can say that we're going to have another public hearing at this point. Um, right now, I will definitely say that we will uh, make a motion to, um, if it's okay with the board, uh, extend the public hearing for another 10 to 14 days. Uh, there's a lot that has to go through. But Chuck, I don't know if you can address some of the questions easily tonight? Um, or if you want to digest some of them, uh, speak with your experts and take it from there?
Well, Madam Chairman, before Chuck, I'm sorry, let me just interrupt you. I think we have, I am so sorry, but I think we have a virtual hand being held in the participant column under Judy Deneen.
Oh, okay. No, thank you for doing that. It's, it really does take a village. Judy, go ahead. Are you on you?
Yeah, Deb, I just wanna put in a couple, my two cents. I'm hoping that um, this might have, I know it's planning board, but I'm hoping it'll be anything but white. I'd love it to be like the color of the Altamont corners that would maybe bring it in together, make it look like all of one in those two corners. And the other thing I would say is I, I would love to see more land, more green space and uh, perhaps maybe mixed foliage. Uh, you could get like the golden bushes and, and a couple more vertical ones, like someone mentioned, I think it was Connie. I agree with that. Uh, just to give it some interest and some contrast. That's all.
Thanks, Judy.
You're welcome.
All right, does everybody, does anybody else see any other hands waving? I've got five screens. I'm trying to page through here, but.
I would just like to get an answer.
Harvey? Is that Harvey?
It was Harvey, yes.
Okay, Chuck, I guess you're up. Do you, do you wanna try to answer some of these questions tonight?
Yes, I, um, I would actually rather spend, um, I know that, you know, it might seem like a longer meeting for you guys, but I would rather spend kind of as much time as we can tonight going through some of the pieces. Um, because, you know, we have been, you know, working on this for, for some time. Um, I'm gonna kinda go through the comments that were received and what I took to be, you know, either a note or um, something that needed to be addressed by me. Um, I will go into the screen share mode, um, just as we um, discuss the, the plans. Um, I am at a slight disadvantage. Um, I did not receive Jeff Purley's um, explicit comment letter. Um, so if those could be um, shared with me, um, that would be appreciated.
Well, the reason you didn't receive them, Jeff, is, Jeff, is we, we don't, we have to um, limit the time that we can look at these, these emails that are coming in. So normally, we, we say it's, it's noon on the Friday before, and we just received his letter at 3 o'clock today. So.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's fine. But if you could just forward it, cause if, if, if someone feels that it's a comprehensive
Yep.
architectural review, um, wanna, you know, so, so to speak to that, um, this is definitely not. Um, so this is the, I pulled up the Stewart's in Brunswick that one of the board members had this discussed. Um, this building that you see on the screen, which is, you know, yellow in color now, um, the building that we're proposing in Altamont is, is a one of a kind building. Um, while the interior may be um, replicated from only one other store of its size, um, Stewart's actually can't decrease the size of the building as the, you know, the current store, this is only about a 20% increase in size from um, from the existing store. So while some may say it's out of scale, this is the size building that we need to continue on um, our business for the next approximate, you know, 40 years. Um, the building that I'm showing here shows some of the elements I think that we could incorporate um, into the building that we're proposing in Altamont. Um, that would be the, the phi-pom bracketing on the, where the columns meet the roofs. Um, and then the, the dormer um, bracketing as well. Um, so we'll look at um, bringing some of those elements into play. Um, and we will look at also colors to see if we can source and match um, Altamont corners. One of the things I do think it's somewhat important to um, speak to regarding the, the lighting particularly, um, Stewart's will not decrease to a, a 2900 Kelvin light. Um, and that's not a desire to have our lighting stand out any more than any other lighting. Um, the, the concern we have with decreasing the lighting um, from 4000 Kelvin, which is already a decrease from our 5700 Kelvin that we, you know, kinda standard stock. Um, you have some business functions that are taking place. And while the highest foot candle measurements occur under the canopy, they occur under the canopy because the light refracts off the concrete and has virtually no place to escape. Um, so we, you know, think it's important for our customer's safety, particularly while they're using the, the gasoline filling, that, that light be um, obviously available to them. Um, I will look to see if we can go to like a, a 3500 Kelvin, um, which would introduce the yellowish hue. I think some are trying to direct us toward, um, but I'm not sure if that provides enough light um, from, for a safety element.
Chuck, could you do um, some type of motion sensor? That if there's someone under the canopy, it would increase the, the lighting and then decrease once they leave?
Um, no, no.
Okay, just a thought.
Yeah, no, um, is that, I mean, the, I mean, think about it from the, the perspective of if that, if that mechanism fails, then there's no light under the canopy.
No, if that mechanism fails, you would still have, let, I mean, just to use the 2900 versus 3500, you would still have the 2900. You just wouldn't have the bright 35.
Once you go to 29, so, so 29 versus 35 isn't like the foot candle measurement. That's the actual temperature of the light. So 2900's like a yellow light and 3500's like yellow white. And then 4000 is, is white and then 5700's pure white. So with, with all of those things, um, I'll see about um, you know, changing to 3500, but I, you know, I can't see going to, to anything less than that. Um, and I don't think, you know, a, a, as Stewart's does have, you know, a number of locations across the state, um, I don't know we've ever gone to 3500. So let me see if we can, if, if that's something we can achieve.
Thank you.
Um, one of the um, speakers made a comment about the, the scroll sign. Um, I think it's very important to know that um, this sign um, scrolls to the price and then is, is fixed. Um, it's not a, it's not an electric message board that would constantly change and have, you know, advertising or, or something of the sort on it. Um, there's no internal illumination on the Stewart's portions, um, nor the regular or diesel signage. Um, so the, only the gooseneck lights would be used to light the, the proposed sign. Um, the next thing is the, the fuel storage and the number of, of changes in customer. Um, we do propose changing the, the fuel storage configuration. Um, that storage will be done through um, it'll be done through two um, underground petroleum bulk storage tanks. Uh, the tanks will be located um, in the eastern corner of the, the property. Um, we are introducing diesel. Uh, one of the reasons that we don't think there'll be a, a dramatic change in the number of customers is because the number of fueling positions uh, remains effectively fixed. Um, so even though we are introducing diesel on the, the outside pump, which would be um, you know, this pump here, um, by having diesel in that location, you cannot use this location for regular fueling. Um, that is also not high-flow diesel. That is, you know, low-flow diesel, which would be customary for a passenger car um, or, or some type of, you know, landscape truck, box truck, uh, something of that nature. That is not looking to introduce tractor fuel, tractor trailer fueling into the, the mix. Um, I do think in hearing the comments in regard to the landscape plan, um, there were a couple of elements that were raised. Um, one, the, the lawn area shown here, um, as Dan had brought up initially, that's outside Stewart's property area, um, and into DOT right of way. So Stewart's will, will not alter that. Um, in addition, the creeping juniper that was shown along Altamont Boulevard um, will be changed and will introduce uh, some type of, of boxwood or a tree or a, a bush that's, you know, 18 inches or, you know, two feet off the ground. Um, I'm assuming that the landscape architect that was selected, or the reason the landscape architect did that was to prevent conflict with people's doors as they open. Um, but to get something of a little height, um, we'll go to a, a shrub in that area. Um, I did on, on purpose say that a, a landscape architect was involved in the development of the landscape plan, because that was a component of the zoning board of appeals determination and a condition of their approval. Um, the certified arborist had to do with the, the tree clearing that was previously done. Um, and that letter was provided to the board on April 6th. So on my part, there was no um, intermingling of the disciplines of those two people. Um, to me, the, the two biggest elements still remain the location of the dumpster, um, which I really need the board to provide guidance on. which I really need the board to provide guidance on. And then, you know, while I don't want to say it's this or that, the species selection along the property boundary to Carroll. As a kind of a consensus of the board, I've heard arbiviti. I understand that it might not be arbiviti, but in the assumption that we do have the fence in place, a non-canopy tree would be appropriate. One of the other things that everyone's kind of focusing on is the Stewart site plan, because that's what's up for review and consideration before the board. But the reality is that Carroll herself has a large canopy pine tree on the northern elevation of her property, which affects the ability of Stewart's trees for growth. So I'd just remind you that, you know, while we're not, while this board is only evaluating the Stewart's site plan and special use permit, there are factors outside of our site plan that do alter what we are able to do. So if the board has specific questions now or can kinda discuss the the location of the dumpster and the plantings, I'd appreciate it. And then, just one last thing, and I apologize for going backwards. In regard to the location of the dumpster, which to me has the most direct impact on, you know, Carroll's property as she currently knows it, I do think, and a number of people have kind of pointed to this, while the store has the potential for impacting a change in her life, both the village board's secret negative declaration and the zoning board of appeals granting of the variances permit the use and identify the potential implications or mitigations that are needed. But to date, there's been nothing put on the record indicating a diminution of value to her property. So I think that those are kind of all important elements for how we evaluate going forward.
Chuck, can I, just one consideration, and you sort of already answered this, but Carroll brought it up again. And it would make a difference as to what we could put between the store and the building is the relocation of the, one of the, Eric, I think it was a condenser?
So I think that the...
Because if that makes a difference between four feet and, say, 10 feet in being able to put something between...
Ultimately, I don't think there's any way to move all of the mechanicals off the back of the building and to the creek side of the property. I just don't see any way to move all that equipment. But, you know, that said, the bard units, which are... You know, the bard units are now circled in blue, and then the ice chest circled in red, and the compressor circled in red would effectively have to swap to get the bard unit, or, I'm sorry, to get the compressor outside the location of the panelized cooler on the side. So no, I don't think that you're gonna be able to bring that retaining wall, you know, three to four feet closer to our property.
Okay, you said that you don't think that there's a possibility of doing that?
I don't, I, this compressor unit, you know, now circled in turquoise. I don't think that one can ultimately be moved. And the reason for that is that it's the one that services the freezer, which is in that proximity. And I don't think that it can be relocated. On the floor plan layout here, this is the, if you can see my mouse scrolling, this is the area of the freezer. So I don't think that this compressor can be moved because it moves away from the freezer area here.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I'm just trying to... What if we mute? Well, maybe we could, you know, table this for now, and maybe, is there someone that you could speak with and ask what could possibly be done? You know, because the difference in space, if it's just a matter of moving that, that condenser and a couple other barb units, I don't know. To me, that's a big difference, and it would be a big difference to Carroll if we're talking 10 feet versus four feet. It's just my thought, I mean, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'm taking up everybody's time here. But, you know, I'm trying to listen to what the public's saying, certainly trying to... Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Dean, if I could.
Absolutely.
Just a clarification, I may have this wrong, but my understanding was the thought of looking at moving all or some of those units, including the HVAC units, was more of a noise issue than primarily to try to move the retaining wall closer to the building. I do agree with Chuck that the one he was pointing out probably can't be moved because it's specific to the freezer. But I do think that there should be some consideration to look at the other three units moving someplace and taking that electric room to the back of the building, if at all possible. I mean, that's what I understood was the intent of that suggestion. More for a noise issue than it was a distance issue.
Yeah, Dean, I think that, Dean, the board was basically saying, if we do that, though, you might be able to change the orientation of the the retaining wall and plantings, like, because if you move the other three units, I... This unit, the freezer unit can't be moved. I mean, that's a, that's not happening. I, you know, sitting here, looking at it, and speaking with the people I spoke with earlier today, that's not happening. What I don't know is if we, the HVAC units, the barb units are relatively close to the building. They're not very deep off the wall. So the air intake is more what affects, you know, the proximity to the retaining wall. So let me, I mean, let me see, but again...
Again, just to clarify my...
Dean?
I'm sorry, just to get into clarified, my understanding was, the consideration was more for noise of any of the four units. Not really trying to get the retaining wall closer for any other reason. If three of those four units could be moved, that's reducing the noise by 75%.
That's certainly, certainly something. Whether it's a noise factor or a factor of the wall and being able to put different plantings in there, that's certainly something. I think it's certainly a step in the right direction. So if you could do that, Chuck, that, you know, that would be great.
Deb, can I ask Chuck a question?
Chuck, go ahead, John.
Chuck, that unit we're talking about, that you said definitely can't be moved, I'm not an electrical or mechanical contractor, but why couldn't that be moved around the corner on the north face? You're still in the vicinity of the freezer.
Because that's the seating area on that side, and it doesn't, now it's open to everybody. So the retaining wall, you know, wraps around the southwest corner of the building, and it's blocked. I mean, that was, so if you, one of the original versions of the site plan had individual surrounds that were vinyl enclosures. What we've now done is dropped the building, so the back of the compressors and the back of the HVAC units are up against, well, they're not up against anything, but they have a space until they're up against a concrete or a rock structure versus, you know, something that would vibrate like the individual vinyl surrounds. Again, I'll look at it. I do kinda struggle with, you know, what we're gonna be able to do, and the real answer may not be, you know, uniform. So it might be, you know, four feet in the area of that compressor, and then, you know, change in course and be six or eight feet somewhere else. But we'll look at it by the next submission.
Thanks, Chuck. Now, as far as your dumpster relocation, that wasn't our next topic on the agenda. But if the board wants to make a motion on that now, if you can get your schematic off there for a second, I can see if the board's raising their hand or anything. Does any of the board have a preference one way or another where the dumpster should be located? And Dan, you know, although, like I said, you can't vote, you can certainly chime in here if you want to. How about Barb? Barb, are you muted? Did you fall asleep?
Yep.
Chuck's here, so I have no objection to it. Now, as far as I know, eight and nine parking spots are going to be where the dumpster is going.
Correct, so they would lose two parking spots.
Okay.
No, no, Deb, I don't want to jump in, except, I'm only gonna jump in when there's kind of technical, I don't want you to misspeak. So we're not eliminating, we would have to relocate the parking spaces in order to be code compliant. But if you look at sheet 2A, it shows the alternatives. But yes, it is in the general vicinity of spaces eight and nine overall.
So you, we wouldn't, okay, so we wouldn't quote-unquote be losing those two spaces. They would just be relook, oh, I think I remember you showing on that one schematic where you'd be moving those two spaces to. Yeah, okay.
Leaving it, Deb, where it showed originally, to me, safer for the truck backing out, rather than moving it to eight and nine. Now, when they back out, they're gonna be back, and if there's a lot of cars there, into other parking spots. So I would think it'd be harder for them to navigate the truck into where they want to put it in eight and nine. But on the other hand, as Dan pointed out in one of his messages, by moving the dumpster, you're eliminating the light closest to Carroll's house. So to me, it's a catch-22. I'm just wondering about the safety of the truck backing up when it is, the dumpster's located between eight and nine.
Yeah, that's a good point.
This is Dan. In one of my emails, I had mentioned it almost seems like it's more appropriate to put it to the side of the building, rather to the rear of the building, because I think it's actually safer, because the truck's backing up regardless. And if people are aware of the truck being there and it backing up, they're gonna notice it, where if it's, the truck has to pull to the rear of the building and then back all the way out, there could be a conflict. It just seems like it's a smarter place to put it, is to put it on the side, rather than in the back.
So put it eight and nine, basically? Yeah, yeah, just...
It's gonna back up regardless, but at least people will see it if it's up at eight and nine. Then put employee parking or something back where, you know, nine and 10 is, or something like that.
That was my thought, to make it employee parking, and that if need be, they could move it, but Connie?
Yeah, I agree that the side location, eight and nine, would be better. I like the fact that we'd eliminate a light and keep the dumpster itself farther away from the property, Carroll's property line. I think that makes sense. Is there, the dumpster is fully enclosed, it's fully fenced? Is there landscaping around the dumpster?
Not, no, there would not be landscaping around the dumpster in spaces eight and nine, because the space immediately east or north of it would be accessible.
Right.
It is proposed to be of, if I understand the details, a white vinyl fence.
Including the front, so somebody'd have to open the fronts to actually use, put something in the dumpster?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay. Thanks, Connie. Steve?
I totally agree with putting it on the side, like what Dan and Connie have both said. I like the fact that we're eliminating a light in the back. Whether they've got a backup on either side, people just gotta have to pay attention, and I do believe that would be the best spot for it.
Yeah, I concur with that. So I guess this is one thing that we could make a motion on, is to make a motion to approve the new location for the dumpster move to, for lack of a better description, areas eight, parking spaces eight and nine. Could I have a motion to approve that move?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Have a Steve.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Connie. Ginger, roll call, please. You're muted. Ginger? Are you still with us?
Sorry, I'm still with you, I was trying to unmute myself. Okay. Board member Huki?
I approve.
Board member Caruso?
In favor?
Board member Rue?
In favor?
Board member Molfelder?
You're muted, Barb. In favor?
Your person hexed.
In favor?
Thank you.
Okay, Chuck, does that satisfy that question?
He's muted, Chuck. Oh, sorry, yeah, yes, voting on things provides clarity for direction.
Absolutely, absolutely, I couldn't agree more.
This is Kirby, I had a question for Chuck that he didn't address from my previous question.
Okay, we can allow one, one more question from you, Kirby. We can't, we can't keep having people going back and forth, but go ahead.
He said he would address it later, and the question was, what kind of insurance does Stewarts have to protect against business losses due to the coronavirus and the risk of shutting down construction mid-project?
Yeah, I think that's a valid question, but the, obviously, the coronavirus element is only to Stewarts, to stop Stewarts' construction. So no other, you know, business would effectively be, or essentially be affected, you know, other than ours. Obviously, under the governor's current executive orders, you know, our business is an essential business. I do not believe that, you know, new construction for essential businesses is permitted. In his, you know, remarks yesterday, he did indicate that construction jobs would be the first that kind of come out of the pause in New York. And in my mind, there's no, you know, two people more socially distant than a guy and an excavator and a guy and a dump truck. But all that said, I mean, we don't anticipate a period of starting and stopping. You know, once we get going, it is approximately a 14-week project. And that would start with the house removal. So, you know, Stewarts would provide the necessary asbestos testing and receive the appropriate demolition permits from the building inspector. And nothing, obviously, would be done that was not compliant with state and local ordinances. I do think it is relevant. We brought it up earlier in this process. Several neighbors invited themselves into the building and sent the Department of Labor what they perceived was samples. Um, and there was no asbestos in the pipe wrap or the visible elements of the building. Um, there is asbestos in the roof. So there, the roof would have to come down and treat it as asbestos in the demolition. Um, but again, all of that will be provided to Lance as part of our uh demolition permit request.
Danny, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, and like that you just voted that he can move the dumpster over to the Creekside. Question would be to Mr. Marshall, does that eliminate that lighting pole there?
It does. Yeah, that was the, um, if you remember, obviously through your board's um deliberation, that was the, the element that we keep, we kept returning to. Um, we couldn't um move the dumpster without planning board authorization because we proposed it code compliant. Um, but yes, now we are able to move the light pole that was um utilized for um, you know, illuminating the dumpster enclosure. The light that's proposed over the delivery door does still have to remain.
Safety considerations, that I understand.
Yep. That light, I will, I'll check the elevations of, of that light though, but that light should um, be under, if you do like a, a finished floor of four seventy, um, and imagine that that light is at um, four eighty. The top of the retaining wall in that vicinity is four seventy, I'm sorry, is four seventy-seven, and then you go eight feet above that for the fence, so you're at four eighty-five. So, you know, you're, the top of the fence would effectively be five feet taller than the top of the light um over the delivery door.
Thank you Chuck. Okay, um, I think um, at this point, uh, we, we should make a decision as a board to um keep open the public hearing for ten days at this point. Uh, we can at, you know, digest what we've heard tonight. I can get some of the um documentation that was, that's been sent to me that uh, I, I guess didn't get forwarded to Stewart's or B, B and L. Uh, that includes um the letter that uh Jeff sent today, uh Kirby's letter, and of course, any, anything else that we received. In the meantime, we'll make sure that either we had that, we uh address uh or Stewart's addresses. And um, you know, I, I don't think we can make a decision tonight whether or not we're going to have another public hearing. But at, we will certainly, we can make a decision tonight whether or not we want to keep open this public hearing. Allison, did I sum that up correctly? You're on mute. She's still with us?
Yeah, sorry, I was on, I was on mute. If the board right now wants to give additional time for members of the public to be able to submit written comments, it can decide to leave this public hearing open for, you know, a, a number of days, ten days, fourteen days, you know, I know Deb mentioned both, whatever the board um feels comfortable with. Um, you can decide to leave this public hearing open until that time. At the end of the extended, you know, ten or fourteen day period, the public hearing would be closed. And then the board can, you know, consider, um, you know, at some point in the future, if it, if it thinks it's necessary to renotice a public hearing, but um, you know, presuming that, you know, it's provided sufficient opportunity for public to comment. The board is able to, I'm sorry, members of the public are able to submit additional written comments following the discussion tonight during this extended time period for written comments. The board can um, proceed to deliberations if it feels comfortable that there's no need for additional um opportunity for comment.
In a public forum, you mean?
In a, in a public hearing.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I don't think that that can be decided tonight. I think it's going to be based on what we receive, you know, from here on in. But uh, if, if everybody's okay with it, um, can we have a motion to hold open this public hearing uh, and for, let's start with ten days, we'll keep it the same as the ZBA did, you know, I, I don't wanna deviate from board to board. Hold it open for ten days and, you know, we'll, we'll accept public, written public comments, whether they're via email or ma- mailed to the village offices or dropped in the village uh slot at, at the village office. And take it from there. And how, what does the board think about that?
Agree with you Deb.
Yeah, we should leave it open.
And can we have a motion to do that, to leave the uh, this public hearing open for ten days from this date for more public comment via email, regular U.S. mail or dropped off at the office?
So move.
Johnny, make a motion? Barb, you seconded it? Did you second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Ginger?
Okay, Board Member Huki.
Uh, I agree.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor?
Board Member Rue.
In favor?
Board Member Melfelder.
In favor?
Chairperson Hex.
In favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and you know, as far as the Stewart's um topics are concerned, I believe that wraps that up. We have one other topic.
Uh, wait, no, no, um, this is Chuck.
Well Chuck, sorry.
Oh, I don't know if your next topic, I don't have the agenda in front of me, I apologize. But your next meeting, the submission date for your next meeting, if you could just clarify that?
Uh, well, it depends on if, a- and you know, that is, that is like my last one, uh, but we will hold it either on the eighteenth, uh, if we decide that we wanna have a, a meeting to discuss what we've had. And/or on the twenty-sixth, what, we won't hold it on Monday, the twenty-fifth of May because that is Memorial Day. So uh, my thought right now is um, I suppose we could set the public, the, the next public meeting for the twenty-sixth, and if we need a, a meeting in between, we could, we could do it at that time. What does everybody think about that?
It's good.
That's fine.
Alright, so then, before we make a motion to look at the minutes, could we have a motion to set the next public meeting to be May twenty-sixth, which is a Tuesday, not a Monday, at seven PM?
I make that motion.
Thank you Barb. Somebody in a second?
A second. It's Connie.
Connie, thank you.
Hey, Board Member Huki.
I approve.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor?
Board Member Rue.
Oh, in favor?
Board Member Melfelder.
In favor?
Chairperson Hex.
In favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, I am so very sorry to interrupt, but um, it occurs to me that the submission deadline for Stewart's will obviously depend on whatever uh date the next meeting will be, but I think that, I guess what we would suggest if the board is willing is to reconsider how long you give the public to comment, so that the public's ability to comment is also on any new submissions Stewart's makes. We just wanna make sure we're crossing all of our Ts and dotting all of our Is. The way it's set up now might have the public comment period, public, uh, for purposes of the public hearing, the written comment, might have that closing before Stewart's ever submits revised documents.
So, y- your, your suggestion was to, to hold it open for maybe fourteen days or?
Enough days after Stewart's mission to provide the public with adequate time to uh review the materials online and also to be able to communicate with the board in writing any comments they have about them.
So Deb, you had, you had mentioned a minute ago that it may be worthwhile for the board to schedule a meeting in between meeting now and the meeting on the twenty-sixth, which would, you know, we would notice as a special meeting if we wanted to do that. If we want to do that, we could try and establish a submission date for Stewart's that would be um, you know, I don't know if we could get, two weeks before that meeting, I don't know, thinking about how many days out we would be. If you had a meeting, say, what, a special meeting, May eighteenth, that's-
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm trying to pull up my calendar quick.
This is Ginger, can I say something?
Hi Ginger, sure.
Um, I believe that May eighteenth, and I have to check my um listing at the office, but I believe that that's the actual next scheduled meeting of the planning board because um, that, that, the week after that, the twenty-fifth, is Memorial Day. So that's the one um day out of the twelve months that gets moved because of Memorial Day. I believe that May eighteenth is actually the next scheduled regular meeting of the planning board.
Thank you Ginger.
Okay. So we're already scheduled for the eighteenth. That is exactly um, four weeks from today. If we wanted to make Stewart's, you know, give Stewart's until, and I guess, you know, Chuck and Leah, you tell us, um, if we were to get you all the written comments that we have so far, you know, you guys could provide, you know, any additional submissions you're gonna make in response to the B and L comments and address, you know, any comments that have come in so far. Um, you know, maybe, I don't know if a week is too short amount of time. And then the public could get, you know, fourteen days, which would be to the eleventh, and then the board has a week to review everything that's come in before the meeting on the eighteenth. But I don't know if that's cutting it too short for you guys, a week from today, to have um new submissions in.
Um, I don't, I don't think in, it certainly wouldn't be done. Um, we have um, outside Kirby's comments and, and I'm, you know, not singling her out, um, but she read the SWIP more thoroughly, I think, than, than a lot of people. But, you know, we've addressed a lot of the plan issues, um, pipe sizing, um, some of the kinda low hanging fruit in the SWIP for, for changes. Um, so, I don't think that, you know, all elements will be fixed by next week. Um, but I do think that the majority of the things we discussed, um, because we've already started looking at, you know, the HVAC, um, the landscape plan, the lighting, um, we've already, you know, developed the site plan with the dumpster relocated. Um, I think some of the other pieces, you know, kinda can fall into place. I do think it would be, you know, from what we're hearing, the, the, the architecture, the, kinda the Jeff, Jeff Purley, for lack of a better term, Jeff Purley's comments. Um, getting those to us would probably expedite if we could address some of the um, building feature elements he had raised, so I, I think May fourth is, is achievable.
May fourth? No, May fourth?
Yeah, that would give a week, or that would give two weeks before the May eighteenth scheduled meeting for public comment.
Or we could, you know, you know, if the board, if the planning board wants, it's up to the planning board. If we give May fourth, um, Stewart's would have their next submission into us, that's a week from today. Then you can either extend the public hearing comment out. Um, you know, ten days would only give the public, you know, one or, you know, two or three days after Stewart's submissions come into comment, so you may just wanna bump that out to, if it's fourteen days, that would give the public until May eleventh to submit any additional comments. That would give them, you know, two weeks to submit comments on anything they heard tonight, and a week after Stewart's makes an additional submission to submit anything specific to that new information that comes in. And then that would also build in a week from the eleventh to the eighteenth for the planning board to kind of review everything that's come in and prepare for the eighteen, so that it can kind of discuss, um, you know, all the comments and the response to comments.
What does the board think? I mean, I, I, I think those dates all seem to work. I- if we hold the next public meeting on the eighteenth, we extend this public hearing out until, for fourteen days, which, does that bring us to the eleventh?
That would be to the eleventh.
Right, that's, that brings us to the eleventh. And then that would give Stewart's time to, a, a week to address anything that comes in in between. Do I have those dates right?
That sounds right to me. I'm sorry, my computer died. I had to jump on with another device. Stewart's was okay with the fourth?
Yeah, yeah, um, I believe so, right? Stewart's was okay with the fourth?
Yes, Stewart's is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're, we're gonna rethink this, and we will extend this public hearing till May eleventh and schedule our next public meeting on that make sense?
Deb, question?
Who said that?
Judy Dennehy.
Hi Judy.
Just a question. Alright, so I asked a couple little things. I'm not supposed to write, do you want me to write that in writing too? Is that, or, or is it, are the comments coming in different and new? I'm not quite sure what we're sending in.
If you wanna put those in an email or whatever to, you know, to Ginger, and then Ginger will forward it to us and we will get it to Stewart's, it's probably best if we can get whatever we can in writing. I was writing Fast and Furious here, but I'm sure I missed some stuff, so.
Yeah, and just to, just to ca- clarify for everyone, all the comments that you've made tonight orally at the public hearing are gonna be part of the record. You've submitted comments. You don't need to repeat your comments in writing, but you now have an additional opportunity, a two-week period from tonight to submit any additional written comments that you would like included in the record.
Additional ones, okay.
Period. You will also have, Stewart's will be making a new submission by May fourth, which we will put online, so you will have a week if you want to submit any new comments on those new submissions, and those could, those comments um, would be submitted in writing to the planning board, and they will, will become part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Allison.
May I ask a question? This is Kate Preventure. Why wouldn't you extend the public hearing until the meeting on the eighteenth?
Because then that wouldn't give Stewart's any time to comment on what we're receiving from the public.
But it would give the public a time to address you verbally.
No, it wouldn't give them time to address us verbally. There's not going to, you know, right now, we're not saying there's going to be another public hearing. We're saying there's going to, the public will be, we extend, just like you did in the ZBA, we're extending this, we're keeping this public hearing open for written communication, whether it's via email, snail mail, or dropped at the office uh, it, for fourteen days. The next meeting on the May, on May eighteenth will not be a hearing, it'll be a public meeting.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that you could extend the public hearing to the eighteen. There's no rule that says you can't do that.
That's correct. There's no rule that says we can't. Right now, we're going to extend the, the, this public hearing for fourteen days. Um, I think that's fair for everyone. It's fair for Stewart's. It's fair for the public. You know, they've had this time to comment, and it'll give us time to digest all the new material coming in. So, so, that being said, uh, let's try this again. Could I have a motion to extend the, this public hearing for fourteen days, which would take us to May eleventh?
So-
It's Barb, I make that motion?
Thank you Barb, second? Did John second it?
I'll second it.
Steve seconded it?
Yep.
Okay, roll call please.
Board Member Huki.
In favor?
Board Member Caruso.
In favor?
Board Member Rue.
In favor?
Board Member Melfelder.
In favor?
And Chairperson Hex.
In favor.
Okay, so let me just ask a point of, uh, clarification here. Is this, um, motion replacing the previous mo- the motion before that was, is there a replacing motion about the, um, extension only to ten days?
Yes, i- it's, it's replacing two motions actually. It's replacing the, the motion to extend the public hearing for ten days, and we're replacing that with fourteen. It's also, uh, replacing, setting the public meeting for the twenty-sixth, because it was already, thank you Ginger, set for the eighteenth.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's it, you know, just, it's extending the public hearing for an additional fourteen days, for additional written comments.
Right.
Okay.
So can we have a motion then to s- set the next public meeting for May eighteenth? At seven PM?
So move.
I thought that was already set.
I, Ginger, was that already set as part of the planning board's yearly calendar?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, alright, we don't have to do that then.
You may, you may wanna rescind the twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to rescind the twenty-sixth, is that what you're saying Dan?
Didn't you pass that motion?
Yes, we had a motion before this one that said the next meeting is May twenty-sixth, so we wanna rescind that.
Yes, yeah, we probably should do that. Alright. We should have a motion to rescind. You know, I don't drink and I need a drink. Quiet Danny. Um, uh, could we have a motion to rescind the previous motion, except that motion, uh, to set the public, next public meeting for May twenty-sixth?
I make that motion.
Thank you Barb. Second?
I'll second it, it's Connie.
Connie? Roll call.
Board Member Huki.
In favor?
Board Member Caruso.
In favor?
Board Member Rue.
In favor.
Board Member Melfelder.
In favor.
Chairperson Hex.
In favor.
Great, thank you.
I think we have one more item on our agenda, and that is, uh, to approve the minutes from the March thirtieth meeting. Anyone have any comments on the minutes? They were sent out, they were really good. No? Could I have a motion then to approve the minutes from March thirtieth, two thousand twenty?
I make that motion.
Thank you Barb. Second, who did that? John?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hey, um, Board Member Huki.
In favor.
Board Member Caruso. Board Member Rue.
In favor.
Board Member Melfelder.
In favor.
Chairperson Hex.
In favor. And Chuck, before I make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I will get, um, uh, Jeff's email out to you right after this meeting.
Deb, can I make a ten-second, um, point about, uh, something that Chuck made? Deb? Can I get ten seconds?
You're on the clock Harvey, go.
Okay, uh, we did not let ourselves in to take those fixtures. We were, uh, in the presence of the-
It's okay Harvey.
Penitent. Okay, well then, don't, don't, don't paint us that, don't paint us that way then Chuck. You said they let themselves in, just like a break-in.
Okay Harvey, thank you. Alright everyone. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make that motion.
And I will second it.
Thank you. Roll call please.
I'm sorry, there was Barb, then, um, I mean, Board Member Melfelder, who made the motion, and Board Member Huki seconded?
Correct.
Okay, so Board Member Huki?
In favor.
Board Member Caruso.
In favor.
Board Member Rue.
In favor.
Board Member Melfelder.
Definitely in favor.
Chairperson Hex.
In favor. Thank you everyone. We'll, we'll get this, by the time we get this all figured out, we'll be back meeting in person, so. Thank, thank you everyone. Thank, thanks especially to the public for your input, we will definitely take things into consideration. Have a good night y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, you as well.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.